Good evening. Welcome to the December 4th, 2023 Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. I'd like to recognize our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Carrie Fugel. Our Board members, Brian Floyd, Sam Treadaway, Keisha Sandage, our Superintendent, Dr. John Capicki, our Vice Chair, Rob Walter, Board Members Laura Lindsay, Pam Escobar, our Attorney Gil, Mittelbrooks. We will move to 1.01 and I'll call the December 4th Work Session to order. We'll move to 2.01 and the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I'm glad to be here. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board Members, we'll move to 3.01 with the election of the Board of Education Board Chair and Vice Chair, and I'll turn this over to Dr. John Capicki.
The first order of business this evening will to be elect our Board of Education Chairperson, and at this time, I will open nominations for Cabarrus County School Board's Chair. Are there nominations for Cabarrus County School Board's Chair?
I'd like to nominate Denise Atcock.
Second.
I have a nomination for Mrs. Atcock. Motion by Mrs. Lindsay, second by Mr. Walter.
And both the nominations be closed?
I have a motion for the nomination to be closed by Mr. Treadaway, seconded by Mrs. Escobar. As Mrs. Atcock was nominated first, we will vote for her. If you vote for Mrs. Atcock to be the school chair, please raise your hand. I have six. Are there any opposed to Mrs. Atcock being the Board Chair? I have six, four, zero opposed, and one no vote.
I didn't say no.
I apologize. I have one, Mrs. Sandage?
I didn't say no.
I stand corrected. I have six yes, affirmative?
Yes, so if you abstain, that will be counted as a yes.
Yeah, so I didn't, I said, yeah.
I apologize. And I stand corrected. I apologize. My mistake. Mrs. Sandage, I am getting old and the years are going. We have seven votes for Mrs. Atcock for Board Chair. I have received the majority vote. I congratulate Mrs. Atcock on remaining the Board Chair for the 2023-24 year until this time next year. I will now hand over the meeting to Mrs. Atcock to elect a Vice Chair. Mrs. Atcock?
Thank you. Okay, Board Members, we will move to 3.02, the election of the Board Vice Chair. I'll open the floor for motions for voting on the Vice Chair.
I move for Sam Treadaway.
I have a motion by Mr. Treadaway. I need a second.
I can second that.
I have a second. I have a motion by Ms. Escobar, a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor of electing Sam Treadaway?
You gotta, you gotta, see if there are any more nominations first.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? I'd like to nominate Rob Walters. Okay, I have a nomination by Ms. Lindsay for Mr. Walter. Do I need a second?
No, technically you don't need a second.
Nominations don't need seconds, yeah.
Technically, you don't need a second for nominations.
Okay. So I will go first with Mr. Treadaway since he was nominated first.
And you need to make certain there are no other nominations.
Are there any other nominations?
I move that we close the nominations.
Okay, I have a motion for to close the nominations. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Escobar. So now, we will go ahead and we will start with Mr. Treadaway. So all those in favor of electing Mr. Treadaway as our new Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So we have six, one.
Might be good to raise hands.
Okay, let's do a revote. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Those opposed? Five, two. Okay, so that is, that closes the votes. Is that correct, Mr. Mittelbrooks?
It is.
Okay, so Mr. Treadaway is our new Vice Chair. So congratulations, Mr. Treadaway. We will take a five-minute break right now to reorganize the board. Welcome back. We will move to 4.01 to adopt the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. Are there any discussion Board Members about the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the December 4th Work Session Agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted as presented. We'll move to 5.01 with Board Chair Comments. Board Chair, thank you so much for electing me Board Members and for your confidence in my leadership. We serve the Cabarrus County School District together as a team, and the word "lead" comes to mind when I think about what a successful Board Team really means. So the L in "lead" stands for leadership. The Board puts the vision and mission to provide every student within our school district a world-class education at the forefront of everything we do. The E stands for empower. The Board empowers our district leaders to make the best possible decision for the 35,000 students we serve together. The A stands for appreciative. As a Board, we are appreciative of the entire educational team that exists within our exceptional school district. And the D stands for delegate. As a Board, we entrust and delegate our school system team leaders with the implementation of the strategies and methods needed to accomplish our goals. And team means together everyone achieves more. We'll now move to 5.02 with our Superintendent Comments with Dr. John Capicki.
Thank you. Mrs. Atcock, before I begin, I would like to congratulate you on your chairmanship. And also, as I hear your words and I reflect on what you're saying, I want you to understand that we take those words seriously as well. And I challenge the leadership that sits out there this evening that maintain many roles in this district, especially those that are amongst the Cabinet Positions and the Directors' Positions, to please reflect on what Mrs. Atcock said and the responsibility you have in front of you and before you. While we are far from perfect, we are always striving to do better and to lead in the right way, as ethically, as honestly, and as transparently as we can. So I deeply appreciate that leadership and setting the tone for us to follow. So I ask all of my colleagues to adhere to those words as we move forward. So thank you. And also, congratulations to Mr. Treadaway for his ascension to the Vice Chairmanship. And I also want to commend the other five Members on the Board. I can tell you that working closely with you over these last few years, especially this last year, has been a very refreshing, invigorating process. I know you have many challenges ahead of you, and you face a lot of very difficult decisions on a weekly basis, and I know how engaged you are. So I thank you for all of your leadership and for all the things that all of the Board Members do, not only here at the meetings, but in the communities at large. I know you're out there and you're involved in the schools and the communities, and I deeply appreciate that. You make our job a lot easier, and I can say to everyone in this community that collectively we are really collaborative, working together for the betterment of the Cabarrus County School System. So I thank you for that. I'd like to remind everyone who attended one of our four community realignment meetings held last week across the district, to please visit the CCS Engage website, where you can become involved in a realignment study by submitting a question on the process or participating in our survey, where you can tell us your opinion on each of the three conceptual scenarios that were presented by Cooperative Strategies last week. It's important to make sure you're engaged in this realignment process in the next couple of weeks and the next two or three months that remain left before we make our final recommendation to the Board. We are encouraging strong community support, and I can tell you that we've had active participation on both our website and our survey. I appreciate the community's involvement in that, and I thank you for that participation. As a reminder, the survey will close on December 15th, and your input will be shared with the Internal Redistricting Committee and the Community Focus Groups, as well as Cooperative Strategies, as they prepare to present the final realignment proposal to the Board in January, with a vote anticipated on any necessary boundary adjustments to occur in February. As we approach the winter break, I'd like to take a moment to remind our parents that now is a great time to get involved in your child's education. Our school's art programs are some of the best in the state, and I invite you to check your school's website calendar for upcoming performances and make plans to attend with your child. Our winter athletic seasons are in full swing. This is a great time to attend a basketball game, a wrestling match, a swim match, or an indoor track and field competition. And finally, a reminder that our high school exams are next week. High school students will be dismissed early on exam days. Dismissal is 11:30 for our high schools, and we ask for parents to please continue to prepare our students to do well on their EOCs and exams by making sure that they get a good night's rest and that they're prepared coming into the building with a solid, healthy breakfast and a good frame of mind as they prepare to do their best. Our students and staff are some of the best in the nation, and we invite you to participate and be an active participant in your child's education. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Capicki. We will move to 6.01 with our construction update with Mr. Brian Cone. Welcome, Mr. Cone.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Let me get the monitor turned on here. All right, so we'll go over our December update on everything we have going on in the department. We'll start with R. Brown McAllister. Exterior concrete work continues to be installed around the outside, mainly on the basketball court and areas in the back where we're making connectivity to the emergency access lane. Landscape installation continues to be installed with permanent plants and seating being installed in all areas around the campus. Canopies at both the student, parent, visitor entrance, as well as the bus entrance, have been installed and completed. All the pipe boards in the loading zones for the kitchen equipment mechanical area, as well as the emergency access road, have been installed. The front entrance courtyard, concrete slab area there, that's the image you see on your right that has been completed, and those areas that are not installed, that's going to be artificial turf. Areas that are receiving turf in the classroom wings, that has started and is ongoing, you'll see here in a few minutes. Remaining exterior storefront doors and glass, just random openings around the building are being installed and completed, kind of buttoning up everything on the outside. And the acoustical panel installation inside as well is just about complete. There's the aerial image of what the classroom wing courtyard is going to look like. And then that's the first layer of the sport court surface gym floor, that's the rubberized surface that goes down in the gymatorium. We continue to test and balance the air inside the building. Obviously, all the air handlers are running, heat and air is going now. It's a big thing with the cold temperatures that we have. Case work installation continues in areas throughout the building. All of our wet areas that have epoxy floors, that's the kitchen, staff toilets, the group toilets, all those areas, the epoxy floors are completed. The gym floors, we had just seen, the insulation has started and it'll be completed in about two weeks. The furniture package has been finalized, and that's going to be presented later on tonight for your approval. The bidirectional amplification system, we call it the BDA system. This is to amplify all the emergency responders' radio signals in these buildings. What we have found is the larger these buildings becomes, the harder it is for signal to get out, so we're required by the fire code to put an amplification system in, and that's a pretty big milestone because you've got to have that in for your fire inspections. All the kitchen equipment's been delivered and is being installed by each of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing trades. Overhead security grills and doors for the kitchen and the dishwasher area has been completed. And those of you that toured saw that the elevator installation had begun as well. That's another image of the gym floor. That's the first layer of fluid-applied flooring that goes over top of the rubberized surface. It will not be white, it does have color to it, so. Case work in the administrative workroom area, those are the mail slots for all the teachers and staff. And again, those of you that toured didn't get to see the finished floors in the kitchen area because they were covered up, but that's what the floors, the epoxy floors, look like. Just a quick stat update, so obviously our diversity spend, remember we had a goal of 10%? That was 4.1 million. You can see that we're just north of $7.5 million now. We had established our own goal of 20%, just under $8.5 million, which we should be able to reach. You can see our billing summary there. We're about 70% billed out on the job as a whole. Contract amount of the 41, 152, 381 has not changed from the start. You can see what we've been billed to date there, as well as what our sales tax capture is down at the bottom, the $655,000. And that's just an image on the right of the bus entrance and the main part of the school Schedule-wise, we're 80% complete on the job, so 20% to go. So on that downhill slide, we have a substantial completion date of March 24th, 2024. That does not mean we can move in that day, but that is the date that the school is substantially complete, that it could be used for its intended purpose if you needed to. But that is the date that we start taking ownership of some of the systems and the warranties start taking place, as well as insurance coverage. That's when we start picking up insurance coverage. And then that's the updated aerial that was provided by Rogers Builders there. That image is just with your back to the front door, looking at how the students', car riders' will be dropped off coming into the front of the school. Again, the kitchen equipment's being installed and connected by all the individual trades. Another aerial image there, kind of looking southwest, it shows the classroom wings, and that's the basketball court there on the right-hand side. And then the lower image to your right is the multipurpose field and the berm that we were able to create and planting the, those are eastern red cedars that we agreed to plant to help provide additional screening to the neighbors. Just a couple more images there, the main entrance at the front for car riders as they'll come up to the school, and then that's standing on the roof looking back at the multipurpose Real quickly on the road improvement, so we did receive bids, we did come in under budget. The Cabarrus County and the real estate group are currently reaching out to the property owners for the permanent maintenance easements that we have to purchase as a part of that. There is no change in the geometry to the road itself, this is mostly a signalization package. So the curbs that you see out there, the roadway that you see is going to stay just as it is, it's not getting widened or changed. There will be restriping done in order to accommodate the change in traffic pattern. One thing to note about this package, these signal poles, it's just an industry issue, they're about 24 weeks out from the time we give them an approved shop drawing. So it's important that as soon as we get these approvals for the contract, that we get shop drawings, we get them approved and get them in. It's pushing the schedule close to middle of July for completion, which is getting to the umpteenth hour to get it done. So that is the worst-case scenario, is what I've been told by the contractor, but that's kind of what they're having to bank on now, unfortunately, due to the delay in the poles. And I think that's all I have on R. Brown before I move on with any questions on R. Brown.
Any questions, Board Members? Okay.
Real quick on Northwest Cabarrus High School, so our construction documents with the design team, they're about 50% complete. In the next week or so, we should have our second pre-construction pricing to kind of see where that number is coming in at. If you recall, our last number we received was about $114 million. You know, that number will get more refined. We're hopeful that it comes in less as they've gotten more information and they're able to dial in that pricing a little bit better. We do continue to work with the project team through value engineering on both the site and the building as a whole. We really don't stop that process once we get started, to be honest, even when the construction starts. And when I had made the slide, we'd not received any comments back from NC DOT or MSTA, but we did receive a set of comments this past Friday afternoon late, which we have a meeting scheduled this week with our traffic engineers and consultants to review those comments and to try and address any concerns that they have. And we're also receiving updated 3D models as these construction documents get generated. The models also get updated and get more refined, we see more systems, electrical devices, ductwork, things that are important to our facility technicians to be able to identify and look at three dimensionally so that they can address any issues or bring them to our That's just kind of an example of what the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing model looks like. Doesn't look like a lot, but there's a wealth of information in there for all of our facility technicians and for the contractors that work on site as well. Those are showing the air handlers, the chillers, all the piping, electrical devices, ductwork, all of that's built into the model, and you can separate these models out individually so that we can look at the individual components if we need to. And then that's the structural model. The white walls there in the foreground, those are load-bearing masonry walls is what that tells us with bar joists. You can see the classroom wing up in the top part of that picture, that's all structural steel and looks like a skeleton frame. And that's all I had on Northwest. Any questions?
Any questions, Board Members? Okay.
Real quick on Central Cabarrus Track, so the improvements, obviously, have started at the track on the backside of that campus. Currently, the D-zone, long jump, the triple jump, shop put, and discus throwing airs have been graded out and concrete installation has begun. Demolition of the existing track had taken place, and the installation of the ABC subgrade surface has already been completed as well. We are a little bit delayed because of schedule challenges from the paving part of this, so it'll be after the holidays before they get in and actually pave the track. We are working with the grading contractor to provide some additional ditch line. There was a grading issue or drainage issue that we're working through to correct that to make this as good a facility as we can for the school. Certainly, they are well overdue for this. And we continue to work with school and staff on some fencing and safety and security measures that need to be addressed and taken care of around this new facility as well. That's an aerial shot of the D-zone, and that's the pole vault landing area and run-up Little bit different layout than we've done at some of the other sites, that's the long jump and triple jump, back-to-back running the length of the one straightaway. And then again, that's the pole vault landing area and the pit. Any questions on Central Cabarrus?
Ms. Escobar? When will this be complete? Will track season be able to use it?
Yeah, we should, barring any inclement weather that may delay us, that should be ready in February, or the 1st of February is what they told me. So it'll be ready for track season. Yes, ma'am. Real quick update on Hickory Ridge High School and that project. Obviously, we had finished the turf field prior to the start of football season, and we were working through the track improvements, so paving has been completed around the track. They were able to get their initial seal coat down on that before we got into some cold weather. The rubberized surface installation has begun and is taking place, and it's kind of at the mercy of weather right now. The colder it gets, we can't lay that rubber, but they are working through that with us. We are scheduled for completion of this track sometime in January of this year. You can see the seal coat portion there in the upper part of that picture, and then that's the rubberized surface that they're laying now. And there's one last aerial of what that facility will look like. And that's all I had. Are there any questions on anything I didn't touch on that you may have?
Mr. Treadaway?
So I'm kind of intrigued by the, I guess it's a fire code for that cell signal gets out, whatever?
It's not cell signal, so it's radio signal.
Okay, 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 all right.
And any administrative staff, you ask, yes, we do have issues with cell signals as well.
Yeah, well, yeah, right, right, right. Very familiar with that.
The fire police don't really care about the cell, they want their radios to work.
Right, right. So at what, I guess I'm curious, at these projects, at what point do we have to meet code, if that makes sense?
To be able to move in?
In other words, new codes that come into...
So projects are, when you start the design process of a project, you establish what version of the building code you are utilizing, or what's being...
Okay, okay.
Because, yes, throughout the process, and some of these projects are so long, that code does change.
Right.
But you adhere to what, just say you're on the 2012 building code, that's what you're adhering to, or whatever that most current version is. That establishes from the date you make that initial submission.
And secondly, I looked it up, but I assume a bollard is...
Pipe bollards?
Is the thing like you see in front of retail stores?
It is, yep.
That keeps you running into it?
That's right. And since we did not do, so it's a pretty big thing on R. Brown because we didn't do a recessed loading dock like we typically do. So, you know, recessed loading dock would stop any kind of vehicular impact into the school, but this, because it's a level dock area, we've had to make sure there's additional bollards that were pretty vital to making sure we got installed, so. So, um, we put sleeves around those so we don't have to paint them and don't have any maintenance on them and they'll be colors of the school. So try to make them as attractive as possible. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Board members, we'll move to six point zero two in our budget presentation with Mr. Phil Penn. Good evening.
Evening, Madam Chair, board members. Good to see you again. Um, I want to take you through sort of where we've landed so far on the 2324 budget and the adoption. Um, I want to give some public recognition to my team, uh, who are working their tails off on this for about 75 days now, trying to get us to this point. Um, you see me here, uh, but that represents an awful lot of work behind me that, that went into this, uh, to get to this point. So if you don't mind, let me take you through, um, sort of where we... Oh, hang on. Sorry about that. So, you know, one of the key questions that's been asked a few times now is how do we get here? Right? And I honestly have to say, it's not any one thing. There's been a confluence of a number of different factors that have been occurring at the same time, some of which were years in the making, uh, and that's not an exaggeration. Um, you know, so if you take a look at this, you know, the state approved budgets that included higher than expected salaries and benefits, right? We didn't see our final allotments on that until October 20th. Uh, local funding is basically been keeping pace with ADM growth and inflation. Uh, we've got a couple of expiring COVID grants, putting pressure on local funding, but that's not the big ones that we've been focused on. These have been smaller grants where there were some staff, a limited number attached to those grants that have migrated elsewhere in the budgeting process. Uh, probably the biggest one in my mind is that fund balance is no longer a revenue source for us and it's no longer a contingency fund. Uh, as I've used the example a few times, we've tapped out the savings account. We, we can't keep shifting over to the checking account at this point. Um, so from our estimates at this point to start the year, and that's funny to say that in December, but you understand what I mean, uh, we're looking at about a $5 million deficit right now. Uh, when we look at, you know, what I think key challenges were, uh, you know, state budget allotments didn't get out until I said until the 20th. Uh, that's a big synchronization difference from where we had the local funding set back in the June timeframe. Now, nobody here controlled that, right? That's kind of where we landed. But I will say, uh, you know, it, it makes it, it adds to the complexity pretty significantly when local is effectively your backstop to what the state does for its funding models, right? And what they decide to allot to you. Now, I think there are some opportunities that come out of this. Um, so it's not all bad news. In terms of how short-term interest rates, what we're seeing is I think it creates some interesting possibilities for us to, um, gain additional interest income with short-term rates being where they are right now. And I've been talking to other district CFOs around the state in terms of what they're doing. Um, and I will make some concerted efforts around that once I'm more fully grounded in what the state requirements are, what we can and cannot invest in. Um, a lot of the budget deep dives that we've done over the past, say, two months or so have really led to some good conversations, particularly with my, my teammates here in HR, uh, around how we do staffing, how we make decisions around that, uh, process changes coming forward as, as a result of that. Um, and, and really getting into a deep dive around how the processes all fit together and how the, all the different funding sources kind of work interchangeably with each other and don't work interchangeably, where they have to be segregated for, for a particular reason to come up with what becomes a, a half a billion dollar budget for us, uh, in the district. And I think also that forced disappointment that we've had over the past several weeks will end itself very well, uh, to getting the ballot, budget balance for this year and open up 2425. Uh, everybody who's been involved with this budgetary process now understands why we go through a zero-based budgeting process, why we take this seriously and why frankly, you know, you know, we don't have a backstop in, in the fund balance to rely on. And one of the comments you'll hear me make later is that's kind of been embedded in the process for at least 12 years, that we would access those funds. Um, so I think a, as a result of that, we're going to be in a place that we come out of this with a much stronger, uh, look at how the budget should fit together for 2425. So we looked at the state allotments coming up, you could see sort of where we landed. Uh, our, our fortieth day ADM was just over 35,000 students. If you were to look back over the past six or seven years, that's about a 1.4% compound annual growth rate, uh, in terms of the number of students that we have. And what I did at the same time is I looked up what inflation was on an annual basis over the same frame, timeframe, and that's 3.6% a year, looking at what the Bureau Labor Statistics puts out. So in my mind, that means if you were to add those two together, your student count growth and your actual inflation, you're looking at costs are growing at at least 5% a year over that stretch. And I'm of the opinion that it's actually a little bit higher than that, and I will prove that out eventually, uh, once I have an opportunity to sort of parse out some datas and some one-time things that affected some of the funding over the years. Uh, but that implies that your funding's got to be growing at at least 5% a year just for you to break even on where you are in terms of student count growth and on your inflationary cost growth. So I think you've heard a lot of this information already, but it's worth repeating for those that are seeing it for the first time. Certified staff got an average salary increase of 7%. Principals saw 4% and the assistant principals followed the same model as the certified staff. Uh, non-certified central office also are increases of 4%, except for bus drivers. Uh, bus drivers saw 6%. But this was kind of important. This was not something that was telegraphed by what the state was going to do. You saw the salary caps get removed on a number of the non-certified positions and some of the top raises were in the 40% range. So we saw 135 non-certified people with raises higher than what the statutory amounts were because they removed the cap on the number of steps. Now, what that means is if somebody had 30 years of experience, was previously capped at level 15, they weren't really being compensated for the level of, of experience that they had. So it's a good thing in the sense that now people are being compensated appropriately, but that leaves us with a situation where, uh, you know, we might have now have much higher salaries than what we'd anticipated. So out of that 135, about two-thirds of those were bus drivers. And we're going to provide the board with an update on, on, on further breakout of, of where that trended out and sort of like bands around what kind of percentages each of the groups saw. We don't want to get down to specific names, right? That's not appropriate, but you know, we will give you additional detail going forward on, on where that all landed. And many of you may be thinking, well, wait a second, you know, the state pays for transportation. I don't understand why this has an impact. And in some cases, you're right, yeah, that's true. But we're seeing a derivative impact on our local budget. As an example, in, in the case of bus drivers, yes, the state is going to pay for all the yellow buses that we operate, but we now have a higher salary amount that we're paying for activity buses, right? So the drivers that are in that space are now earning a higher salary than what we originally anticipated. So we have this, um, similar vein, you know, we've got, uh, staffing models that are in there that will look at the way that we do staff, sorry, again, the way that we do staffing internally is a little bit different than the way the state allocates. So as a result of that, we currently have 75 teachers that are funded out of the, out of the local budget. So in other words, our state allocation doesn't cover all of our teaching positions, right? So Dr. Williams and I have had a number of conversations around this and, you know, going forward into the 2425 year, that's something that's going to be kind of a primary focus for us going forward. So again, and I kind of touched at this at the beginning, there's no fund balance appropriation available for us for 2324. Uh, that's because of a multi-year spend down and the limits of the board policy that's in place right now. As you may remember, the board policy requires us to have at least an 8% fund balance and that we cannot appropriate for use unless we're above 12%. That's not the way the policy currently reads. So some of the continuation budget requests were funded by county. The, the biggest piece was inflation. Uh, we saw some charter school allocation money that was not also appropriated. Uh, but to their credit, and we'll talk a little bit about this on the third point here, they did give us an increase of 8.1 million, right? And then they came back and gave an additional 1.6 million in one-time funds to use for the current year. Um, but so, you know, it, it kind of begs the question, well, how did we get here and why do we not have any fund balance available to this? So let me, sorry, go back one. So I think, uh, in terms of looking at this, and you've seen some of this data from when our external accountant was out here presenting this as well. At the end of the 201819 year, we had 17.4 million in local fund balance. Scroll forward to 201920, there was an anticipated use of 3.3 million of that fund balance that was baked into the budget. But if you recall, that was the first year of the pandemic. Schools closed in March, you didn't have some of your expenses take place, so instead of using and consuming fund balance, it went the other way and you actually built fund balance in that year to the tune of about 3 million. As a result of that, you end of the 201920 year with 20.7 million in fund balance. Scroll forward again another year to 2021, and you'll see that the anticipated fund balance that was used, that was built into the budget was, was 9.2 million. Now, what you actually used to cover operating costs was just under 3 million. But then we also transferred 1.6 million, and this is kind of showed in the, in the first footnote, to Kids Plus. And if you remember what was happening in the pandemic, there was a constant, a deliberate decision to keep people on salary. Kids Plus had no revenue coming in, they needed additional funding to keep making payroll. That's why the 1.6 million was transferred in. Bottom of that year, we're, we're just under 16 million in fund balance now, right? So that's the first year of consuming it. 2122, the budgeted fund balance use was now 3.2 million for that year. As it turns out, we actually used 2.9 to cover operating expenses. But then we also transferred another 3.6 million to, to our capital account to pay for the two high school tracks that are shown in, uh, the second bullet point on the, at the bottom of the page. End of the year, we're at 9.9 million. Now, this is kind of where things get a little more interesting. 2223, there was a budgeted, uh, fund balance appropriation of 5 million. But if you think about it, you ended 2122 at 9.9, you shouldn't have been able to have 5 million in that budget for that year because it would have put you out of compliance with your, your, your board policy at that point. Now, as it turns out, you only used 800,000 with a footnote, right? Because in that year, this, that was the year that the county gave us the additional 1.6 million dollar appropriation. So the right way to read this, and again, the, the exhibit ties to the way the financials were laid, were laid out, but when you account for that 1.6 million, 800,000 really is worth 2.4 that you used to cover your operating expenses. And instead of ending the year at 8.9, you ended 1.6 million below that in terms of what your run rate was, right? So you're really at 7.3. So 7.3 is almost exactly where 8% would be versus where our spending is right now. So we, we basically have tapped out the well in terms of being able to continue to use fund balance going forward. And that's consistent with what you heard with the external auditors. This is just a different way of looking at it and trying to understand how we got here. So one of the things I went back and did is how close is our county appropriation tracked to our ADM growth over time and inflation over time? And this, this produced kind of an interesting result. So if you go back to the 201617 year, I looked at the county appropriation excluding what was given to us for charter schools and anything related to Kannapolis City Schools, right? To really look at what's quote unquote ours, right? And you see, you know, at that point, we had just under 32,000 students. You can come up with a per pupil appropriation there. And then I said, okay, if I took that same 3.6% for inflation and I rolled that forward, what would that look like? So 3.6% on the first figure gives you 1,863 dollars the next year, it gives you 1,930 dollars the next year. And then you start thinking about, okay, well, what does my appropriation look like on a per pupil level? And where this was interesting for me is that you've got the county basically keeping pace with ADM growth and inflation growth of 3.6%. My issue, I think, is that, I think there's a case that our costs are actually growing faster than that because there are certain decisions that we've made locally that are driving up costs a little bit faster than that. And I, I use local supplement as an example, right? Over the same time period, local supplement went from 7% of salary to 12% of salary. And that was a deliberate choice, right? We wanted to make sure that we had the best teachers coming in the door and we wanted to make sure that we were competitive versus other districts. In that same timeframe, we've gone from $8 million a year in local supplement costs to 17 million. So it, the costs in that line are growing faster than I think the overall rate of inflation is. And I, I need to do a little more digging myself to prove that out and I'll be happy to share that with the board once that's done. Uh, but that's just one data point within the set of everything that we look at within local that we know is growing faster than that. Now, the good news following up on that, not great news, is federal entitlement grants actually came in close to what we expected and a little bit higher than last year, and I'll show you an exhibit on that. Uh, our COVID relief grants were, were, should be fully expended by June 30th, which is ahead of the September 30th deadline. That's, that's intentional on our part. Uh, we're going to go into a much deeper look at final plan COVID grant spending for this year. And, and in particular, we're going to talk about what is going to happen with the remaining folks that are on that grant right now, what our plan is for that. And Dr. Williams has got a very robust plan that I would hope he'd be one to tag team with me when we get to January to talk through where everybody's going to go and what our plan is for, for those folks. And the good news is I'm not going to, I'll preview it here. It's like we've got a, we've got a plan for everybody, right? It's not, we're looking at riffs when, when that, when that happens. So to take a look very quickly at, at, at our federal grants, and these are the major six ones, six major ones that we get, I'm not going to read all the detail on here, but it, it gives you an idea of what the grant is called, what the particular purpose of that grant is, what we got for 2223, what we got for 2324. And if you cycle all the way down to the bottom, you see that we're up $900,000. And of course, the first in the line of thinking might be, well, Phil, that's great. Why can't we use some of that to offset a deficit? And the reason is the federal grants come with a restriction that you cannot supplant what you already have in local. So in other words, you, you, the federal grants are increased with the belief that you continue to spend more and do more things as, as a means of improving your district. You can't say that I had a half a million dollars that I anticipated spending in local that I'm not going to shift off to the federal grant. You can't do that. There's, there's a constant call, maintenance of effort that comes into play with these federal grants, that you have to maintain your effort going forward, otherwise you get flagged for it and, you know, we don't want to do that. So that kind of leaves us where we can't use federal grants as, as a means of supplanting what's already in our local budget. Um, other funds, there's really no surprises there, nothing unusual in terms of budgetary issues. Uh, as I said, there's probably an opportunity to increase some of our interest income in the special revenue bucket. Certain purchases in the capital outlay we've put on hold, like furniture, it, it's different than the furniture that's on your agenda tonight. It's non-construction related things. These are things like, you know, just replacements within, within school buildings where we feel there might be an opportunity to wait until July 1st to, to get us into a different budget here to do those, right? To defer some of that stuff back, um, unless it's critical, right? We're not deferring anything related to safety and we'll talk a little bit about, uh, what we've done internally now to try to address this deficit. So, you know, when we initially rolled up our numbers, the deficit looked more like 7.6 million. So, you know, again, I want to come back and publicly acknowledge my team and their efforts in trying to work that number down, uh, give credit to the board as well, uh, to the cabinet rather, for, for their efforts on identifying about 1.4 million dollars worth of cuts that were out there. We continued to work that number down over the last several weeks to now where it is currently at 5 million. So, you know, we're looking at more aggressive interest income, as I said, use of grants, but I would caution that there's not any one big thing that will solve this, right? Because frankly, if there was, it would have already taken it. This is going to be done 50,000 at a time, 40,000 at a time, 100,000 at a time. And, and the point of the last two bullets on the page is that it's going to be a lot of small pieces, not a one big piece, and it's going to take a lot of effort to get there. So last week, uh, at our pre-K to 12 meeting, I had, uh, four different presentations to various groups of principals on, on what we're going to do going forward. And this isn't a comprehensive list, but it's the big pieces that you should know about, right? Um, one of the big things is we call purchases frozen, and that's not really frozen. What it really just means is that there's a new level of review on all the purchases that are getting made, either by me or a combination of me and Dr. Kapicki, basically saying if it's not directly touching students, we need to take a second look at it, right? Because it's, it's critical to the mission. Sarah Reeves and her team, you know, are, are being very collaborative in terms of looking at what are the curriculum and instruction purchases that we're making, you know, and making sure that there's not duplicative purchases that are being made or purchases or purchases that are being made in conflict with what we're doing at a district level. So we think there's, we've developed a pretty robust process now on how that's going to work, not unlike what's being done with technology purchases. We're rolling through Ben and his team to make sure it's consistent with what we're doing as a district. We're not going to be doing the same thing for CNI. Any of those new requisitions get a final review by me. If I've got a question, I'm tapping out to Dr. Kapicki and we're saying, what do you think about this one? We've frozen travel and professional development expenditures, anything paid for out of state or local, except anything that's already encumbered. Because frankly, if you've already paid the reservation, if you've already paid the conference fee, you're probably not getting it back anyway. Or if there's a statutory compliance requirement associated with that. If somebody needs to continue their license, if somebody continues to need to do something to maintain a program, we're going to still approve those going forward. We're being really restrictive around overtime, making sure that it's really necessary, that we're not getting into a place because it's a controllable cost for the most part. But we understand that there are certain situations that will arise on a short-term basis that justify the overtime when we're approving those. We're also approving anything that requires overtime to directly support a student because we've seen a few instances of those as well. And then lastly, any new hires have to be approved by me or Dr. Kapicki. And again, I applaud Dr. Williams and his team in terms of the work that we've been doing over the past several weeks now around this, kind of in advance of knowing this was coming, where we're literally looking at every hiring requisition and every hiring decision. And I would tell you that 85 or 90% of what we see passes on the first try because it's not about being restrictive. It's not about preventing a classroom teacher from being hired or an ECTA from being hired. It's about making sure that have we looked at all the factors that are in that building to make sure that that, there's justification for that hire? And when there's not, and in the 10 to 15% of cases that are outside that, usually that just winds up being a follow-up conversation with the hiring manager. Take me through this a little bit more deeply. Help me understand what your need is here. Have you considered this? So even on that first pass, if it's a no, it's usually just a pause. And we may very well come back and approve it later. And there's been situations where we've done that work and the justification was there and we've approved the hire. So, you know, I was trying to convey to the principals that this isn't the end of the world. You know, that this is, we want you to continue to operate your schools. You want you to be successful. You want you to make sure you have what you need. But at the same time, we've got to be cautious. And I was asking for their partnership in this process going forward because to solve the remaining 5 million can't be done out of finance alone. We need participation where the money sits, right? And if you ask Don Gilger why he robs banks, it's because that's where the money is, right? So right now, a fair amount of the money is tied up in the schools and that's where we've got to go for some of it. I don't want all of it, right? It's like, I need a piece. Help me get there to help us get through this and get to a place, frankly, when we get to 2425, this isn't an annual process for us. We get this right on this pass, set this up correctly for 2425, set it up for a budget resolution now that becomes our stake in the ground for 2324, and we can move forward and keep you updated on our progress as to how we're closing that deficit. And then lastly, as I mentioned, we're going to try and get an S or update for you on the January 8th meeting. We'll talk about what we're spending, but more important, we'll also talk about what the plan is for all the staff that are currently on that grant. That's a lot of information at once I just threw at you, but I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, board members, anyone have any questions? Mr. Walter?
Yeah, thank you for the, I guess, honest take on where we're at. Can you talk to me a little bit more about the charter school pass-through and what didn't get funded there?
Yeah, you know, when we go back and we look at the line items that were presented to the county and we look at the three that comprised the 8.1 million that they gave us, that line item wasn't one that was picked. And I don't know that that was an intentional not to do it as opposed to, if you look at the ask on the page, they gave us what we asked for. But the way you got to that 8 million just, you know, didn't jive with what we know these costs are because when we have a pass-through cost for charter schools, that's exactly what it is. It comes to us and we send it back out to the charters. There's no retention of any of that money here. So in the sense that we're short on that, we have to make it up elsewhere.
That was our mistake, it's not the county's mistake?
Listen, I can't speak for the county. It wasn't in any of the meetings, right? So I'm going to be cautious around that. But what I will tell you is, when you look at the three things that were picked off the request page for funding, that was not one of them.
Okay, so they're saying they gave us 11% more than they gave us a year prior?
Which would be accurate. They gave us an $8.1 million increase, that's accurate.
So, Mr. Walter, that was a request that was made. It was not funded, but I'm pretty, I'm fairly confident that if I go back to the county and talk to them about that, that we can get that funded.
Thank you.
I've had some conversations with the county. The county's been very collaborative at this point and supportive of any needs we have. And that is something that we will definitely go back and talk to them about. So my recent conversations, they have expressed collaboration.
Okay, and then are you going to give us monthly reports on where we stand?
Yeah, that's part of why the reason we want to drop this stake in the ground with the budget appropriation adoption tonight because now we can give monthly, updated monthly spending reports on all the funds. Because I've shown Dr. Kapicki what my vision for that is, but we needed to have this drop into place before we can start reporting on anything.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Escobar?
So thank you for all the work. Thank you to the cabinet for the 1.4 million. You know, like you said, chunk by chunk, we're going to do this. And thank you to all the admins at all the schools who are working towards this and helping us reach this goal. I just want to have you reiterate about the classroom because I know you said it's not a hiring freeze or it's a revisiting or whatever you want to call it. But I just don't want the message to be out there because we have openings. We have openings in all the schools, not all the schools, excuse me, at every level. And so I just want to make sure that we continue to find the best people to teach our students and to be with our students at all.
So to that point, I want to be very clear. We have not stopped hiring anyone. We are just, what we're trying to do, myself, Mr. Penn, Dr. Williams, is to make sure that we're putting a keen eye on everything. So that we say to you, for example, this is an example, we say that we attritioned five positions. Attrition means you didn't rehire those positions, that they're not, they're no longer necessary. That you can't have attrition and growth at the same time. It's one or the other. And obviously, you know, we're growing. But the question is, do we need, as people retire, for example, is that position required to be filled? And that, we're just really looking a keen eye to say, okay, are we getting this right with our numbers? Do we have our numbers correct? So to be frank, I just think that with myself and Mr. Penn and Dr. Williams's HR department looking at these numbers, we will get ourselves to a better position moving forward. But we are not refusing or denying any position that is being requested to be filled, especially when it touches a classroom or a teacher position.
Any other questions? Ms. Sandage?
So when I asked this too in our two-by-twos, and just wanted to get clarity. So are you saying that we are not? Can you just tell me what our number is in our fund balance at this point? I want to understand if we are actually meeting board policy? And if we're not meeting board policy, like, what does that mean?
Sure, right now, you are meeting board policy.
Okay.
Right, when we ended the year, adjusting for that 1.6, you were still sitting at 7.3 million in fund balance. You have an operating budget of just about 90 million. 8% of 90 million is 7.2 million. So you're sitting right at the limit for where you should be for board policy.
My other question is about, at the end of the school year, many schools have lunch balances. Have we accounted for this when we're axing the schools to cut back or whatever we're axing specifically to the schools? Have we thought about that and what was the thought? What are we doing?
That's a great question. And that came up a lot more than I had anticipated with meetings with the principals last week when we went over all this. And I hadn't been aware to the extent of the issue, but now I've gotten grounded in that. And as I shared with them, and I'll share with you, I've always kind of seen that as a great opportunity for community partnership in terms of finding organizations that are out there. And I'm thinking corporate foundations and those kind of things who have an interest in the education space. Can you help us out with this? And I have no problem, dialing for dollars, to get on the phone and meet with those folks to say, hey, listen, this is a problem for us every single year. We'd love to have your participation because if we have to pay this out of the school's ADM money, it takes something away from the programs that they would otherwise have funded. But that's kind of where my vision is for that because I don't want the schools to be directly impacted because they're not directly in control of that situation. They're just at the end of the chain, so to speak.
Yeah, and I can attest that to. Mr. Legrand and Mr. Palmer have actually inquired along with Dr. Parker and Mrs. Blessington what our principals are, we're asking them, what do they need? What are the things that they need to be funded? So we've worked at some of the traditional costs and some of the other things. I'll give you some examples. To your point, the lunch debt was one of the things they asked about. Some graduation costs or educator's handbook, technology replacements, some early costs, early college fees and things of that nature. So we are asking them to tell us what those expenses are. So we're getting a good feel for what they may be.
And just to expand on that slightly, one of the things that went out with our budget templates, and it seems counterintuitive given the conversation we're having tonight, is what do you wish you had that your ADM doesn't fund, right? If you could have something and get done, what would that look like? And part of the reason we asked the question, and I explained this to the principals, is if we see it come back in enough places, that potentially gives us an opportunity to buy it as a district or go in with a specific funding request around that particular item as opposed to $4,000 here, $10,000 here, $6,000 there, that people will lose sight of otherwise. But it may even give us the opportunity, if the request is big enough, to go out for an RFP and get competitive pricing for, that's going to benefit everybody. So that's one of the things that we specifically asked for, for principals, as they start building out their 2425 budget. Yeah, we got a deficit, we got to solve, but that shouldn't prevent you from, I never use the word wish list, but it's like, what would you like to be able to do beyond your ADM that you feel would benefit your school directly?
Two more questions. My other question was about fund balance, and, you know, I see that as a savings account. And just wondering how you replenish that savings account? And then I'll just piggyback on that. My other question, my last question is about, you know, we can't allocate anything to the fund balance going forward because of where we are. We're sitting at that cutoff, correct?
Go ahead, finish your question.
So since we can't do that, is all of this going to figure out where that money that we've been allocating from fund balance will come from in the future? I hope that made sense to you.
Yeah, so the only, there's only two ways that you can wind up with an increase in your fund balance. One is you have a budgetary surplus. And a surplus at its simplest terms is the revenue you got in that year was more than the expenses that you had in that year. And if you remember the chart I showed on an earlier slide, where you added to the fund balance in that year is because it was COVID, right? Your expenses were lower than the revenues you had. You added $3 million to your fund balance. The second way that you would do it is you put a specific line item in your budget that's called fund balance restoration, right? And I've been in that places where we've had to use that before and it's perfectly acceptable if it gets funded, right? That's sort of question number one. And question number two is that provided that, the whole rest of your budget is fine, right? So in other words, you can't have a fund balance restoration line for 250,000 and have a deficit somewhere else of 500,000 because those two won't balance out, right? But those are the two ways that you would go about doing it. And as you might expect, restoring your fund balance is a much longer process than consuming your fund balance. But it certainly can be done.
I guess I just want to make sure. So what you're doing now is going to make sure that we don't end up in this predicament where we need fund balance but we can't use it. I hope that made sense.
If I was personally a taxing authority, yes, I'd say that's what we're doing right now. But as you know, there are decision-makers that control what level of funding we receive. I will do everything that I can do to manage the expense side of the equation. I don't control the revenue side, unfortunately.
And that's where I guess the big question is. Thank you.
Mr. Floyd?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Penn, and thank you for meeting with me earlier and everybody. I just want to say I've worked with a lot of budgets and CFOs. In fact, I've been in an organization, as I came into it, that was almost in this exact predicament and got there in almost the exact same way. And it was able to be fixed. And I just want to tell you that I have pretty high confidence in you after meeting with you, having walked down this road before and hearing your take on it and how to approach it. I think it's important to say that in front of everybody that I am reassured by your grasp of the problem and your reality of the solution to the situation. And just thank you and here to support you as you get us out of this.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions, board members? Mr. Treadaway?
I just want to, I understand why the principals came back about the lunch charges because it's not just the amount, it's the timing. It's really unfortunate because it's at the end of the budgetary year. So it's a real predicament and it's a conundrum that's always an issue, but it's going to be especially an issue this year. So I get that.
I appreciate that perspective, thank you.
Also, Mr. Treadaway, I can't cite a specific number, but I do know that it's not out of the ordinary for our local establishments, our local community to donate to that balance as well and help us with some of those costs for some children who have a difficulty paying that. So we do appreciate our community's support on that as well, so thank you.
I would just like to ask too, if you're going to come out with an amount that we are going to try to reach, like by the end of this year, is there an amount that you think we can reach? Or is there an amount that you're?
Just clarify for me, an amount of what?
For the fund balance, like you were talking about, the fund balance restoration. So if you're cutting back and you're cutting back expenses was what you said you were going to do, is there a number that you have in mind?
Yeah, the number is zero, right? Because I really like to cut the deficit we have, it's 5 million down to zero. That's the first goal. For second goal, 2425, that's going to be a conversation with the board about what number do we put in there for fund balance restoration?
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. Sandage?
So, and I asked this before too, but will you let us know if there is policies that need to be revisited as a result of what we are experiencing right now?
Your question's a good one, right? Because being candid about conversations I've had with other district CFOs, some of those districts don't have policies that have the same restriction in it that we do. That said, there is some logic to having a policy that restricts how much fund balance you have. And it's for exactly this reason, right? I mean, I talked to one similarly sized district whose fund balance was a million and a half dollars right now. And I'm not sure that's the direction we want to go in, right? Because you're down to days of cash at that point if something unexpected happens. But I appreciate the question as kind of thought-provoking in terms of what's the right number, right? And I'm not sure I have a good answer for that right yet. I mean, my immediate concern is, let's get this deficit fixed and then we can have some follow-up conversations around where we think the right number should be.
Thank you.
Ms. Lindsey?
So I just want to say that I do appreciate listening to what you were saying about dialing for dollars, soliciting our corporate entities that are out there to help our school system has been something I've mentioned multiple times. I think that at this point, I'm not sure as far as funding with what our education foundation is able to do to help us as well. But I definitely think that anybody that's out there listening that would like to help partner with the school system, especially in a situation where we're in a bit of a deficit right now, we would greatly appreciate any help that any of those community businesses can provide for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just said, it's a tax write-off, ain't it?
For them, that's right.
I think that's it.
All right, very good, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we'll move to 7.01. And these are our items for consent or action. So the first one is to adopt the budget resolution that Mr. Penn just presented to us.
Hello again. So in your board package, you have two different documents. One is the actual resolution of the board to adopt the budget for 2324. You'll see that's a two-page resolution that would have a signature page on the back. It becomes basically our grounding to the auditors to say that the board adopted a budget on this date. It's a format that I know you're familiar with, with one exception. If you look under section one, and where it says over budget amount being addressed, right? That is a new line that did not appear there last year. So under Fund II, Local, that's the amount of the deficit we're trying to close right now. So if you were to take that 97 million and subtract 5 million from it, it would balance against the revenues in section two of 92.658 million. But that's the one major difference that is contained within this in terms of structure versus prior years that I think you're more familiar with. The second one is a comparison of 2324, both for revenues and expenditures, versus the 2223 adopted budget. So you'll see how things changed between the two years. And one of the bigger ones you'll naturally see is what's the change in the local revenue? You no longer have a fund balance appropriation for 2425, excuse me, 2324 versus 2223. That's the major change. But those are the two pieces that we need. You know, it's really the first one to kind of get the budget adopted so that we can start providing you updates on a monthly basis sort of on where our funding is and where we think the deficit is at that particular point. Questions?
Any questions, board members? No questions. So does the board agree to put this on the consent agenda for our December 11th business session? Okay.
All right, perfect, thank you so much again.
Okay, board members, we'll move to 7.02, our school improvement plans for low-performing schools with Dr. Jonathan Bowers. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, it's good to see you. Members of the board, Dr. Kapicki, certainly it's my pleasure to be here with you tonight to present to you our school improvement plans for our low-performing schools. If you recall, during the month of November, had a chance to share with the board what our plan would be moving forward for low-performing schools this year. And some of the targeted district efforts that we're going to certainly deploy to make sure that we're there to support our schools as they're moving forward, the identification of their goals, to truly move them from a, out of a low-performing status. I'd be remiss if I didn't begin by thanking our principals, our school leaders, our teachers really for their work because those plans that you see really are a testament to their efforts. The thought, the data planning, the review, and really the leveraging of strategies all lie within the school level. So the reflection that you see offered in those plans are really a testament to the work that they've put forth. But that began, as you recall, back in the summer when we started talking about our school improvement planning efforts and we talked about our continuous improvement planning efforts. I've shared with you previously this particular graphic, if I can get it to come up. There we go, and I got the clicker that didn't work. All right, so maybe a little assistance from the back there. If we could drive that next slide forward, please. Thank you. This framework we've shared with you as well, this gives you an idea of exactly what is that brand to which we have identified that really drives continuous improvement for Cabarrus County schools. So if you think about this from a cyclical standpoint, we are still really in that implementation phase. That takes place throughout the fall and throughout the mid-year point. We're nearing that point where we want to ask ourselves, how are we doing? Where are we? What's taking place? And so that's part of our progress monitoring throughout. So continue to use this to be able to drive where we are because this is really our roadmap, if you want to refer to it as such. Again, last time did be able, was able to share the framework that we had also for what are going to be the statutory requirements associated with our school improvement planning. So if I could get the next slide, please. So here again, this was shared previously, it just outlines exactly statutorily what is to occur. And so where we are tonight, we've neared the end of that 30-day review period. And this is where schools would have their school improvement plans available to stakeholders for comment, for feedback, and for being able to share any input that they may have. Next slide, please. Alongside that, this outlines once again our district supports. How do we, as CCS district leadership, plan to support schools? So again, this is a partnership. This is a collective, but this is not something to which they're certainly enduring on their own and the journey that's on their own. So when you talk about intentional and thoughtful conversations, when you talk about classroom walkthrough support, when you think about resources to which we can deploy to make sure that we're identifying them with the support of their goals, this is where it begins. And so we also have not only bi-weekly meetings, but also opportunities to be able to sit together as a planning team and say, how are we doing? And so we'll be able to review this just so we don't show up at the end of the year and then all of a sudden there are some unexpected or unanticipated outcomes there. Next slide, please. So once again, this was the timeline. You can see this begins back for the low performing school purposes in mid-October. This is when obviously the, we were able to share with you in advance what our district plan was going to be. We provided that. And then each of those segments along the way lead you up to the point tonight to which we're bringing the plans to you for approval. So I'll pause there for any questions.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Walter.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. How many, how much feedback have we got on these plans?
Interesting enough, we reviewed that prior to today and we have not had any feedback provided. We actually had a survey that we posted and shared out. This is the first time we've used that collection method. Each of our schools was able to use that through our Engage website. And after review it, this was about 4:30 this afternoon, we did not have any feedback through that particular instrument.
Okay, maybe there's a better way or something we can think of next time.
Sure.
My other question is, how do you determine if the goal is a SMART goal?
So that happens at the district review process. So initially what we began, we began with the SMART goals with our planning in the summer where schools and their teams came together and started to review their data. So again, we began with a data review exercise, understanding of what the current state would be. And from that, being able to determine, okay, what is it that they vision as the expected outcome with those particular goals? So throughout the entire process, schools had a chance to be able to refine that, define what are going to be their performance measures, define what is going to be the mechanism by which they determine that, be able to determine what are going to be those target dates associated with it, and the associated resources with each of the goals. So the plans as they're presented will have that information in varying aspects within the End to Start Planning Tool. And again, alongside that, we also had a chance to be able to review, principals did, those goals with one another and walk through that exercise. It was a district team. We met with each of the schools and also went through each of their plans as well.
So the ultimate goal is to come off this low performing school list?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And the way they're on the school list is they've had some, not either meeting proficiency or not meeting growth, is that right?
Yeah, as defined by the state, that's correct.
As defined by the state. Some of those gaps are pretty darn large. Might be difficult to actually to meet, to get off that list. Are they expecting all those schools to get off that list in the year?
Well, I think our expectation is for all of our schools to ensure that they're doing what is right by students first and foremost. I think that that right there in itself is the effort. One of the things that you mentioned that is a component of the low performing school identification is a growth element. So we've actually seen last year, as a matter of fact, one of our schools through their growth measure was able to exit low performing status because they exceeded growth at the school level. So those are the things that we know that if you, some of the deficiencies or some of the gaps that you talked about from perhaps a proficiency standpoint may not be there. Making sure that we're emphasizing and supporting students and schools to have each student reach his or her growth potential within that given year.
Well, you obviously want to see them successful. I just want to make sure that...
Absolutely.
The plan's going to get us there in a reasonable way and not set a bar too high that isn't reachable. So thank you though for the presentation.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Sandage. Ms. Lindsey.
Thank you. I just wondered, so as you've gone through this process with the admin of each one of those low performing schools, I don't know how to say this, but what is the accountability? So essentially, like if you don't get to here by this period of time, then where do we go from that?
Well, and great question, thank you. One of the measures we've built in that we want to certainly be more mindful of and cognizant of and support along the way is that progress monitoring piece. And schools do a great job of this, being able to measure themselves throughout to determine whether or not they are moving towards what are going to be those, as Mr. Walter was stating, those stated outcomes, those SMART goals. And in many cases, this is one in which understanding the students, having the data available, that really gives them an idea as to what is attainable for each of their students from a growth standpoint within the building. Quite honestly speaking, one of the reasons that some of these schools have these challenges is because the proficiency standard is in place and the model that's in place and the fact that the state places 80% of the emphasis on the school performance grade with, you know, the proficiency standard. That does present some difficulties and that does present some challenges for schools that find themselves in these particular identifications, under this identification. So ensuring that we're making sure that we target that growth, which we can control and we can commit more of our resources to and we can further support, that really becomes the lens that we look through this. So to answer your question is, you know, how do we ensure with the accountability piece at the end of the day, our accountability is really what we do, is the expectations we set upon ourselves. It's making sure that we want to serve our family and our communities. And that's the true accountability, making our schools, all of our schools, they are great places, they are wonderful places. These measures aside and these designations aside, they are a term. But we also know there are many great things happening. And for us to continue to accentuate that, highlight that, promote that, but also making sure that we're serving students in our model that we know we can, and that's that growth piece.
Ms. Sandage.
Just to your point, my daughter attended a low performing school or a low rated school and, I mean, she's doing fine. I mean, she's an EC's child, but I mean, she's doing fine. I think there's this consensus out there that because the school is a D, it makes it a horrible school and that's just not true. So I just, that wasn't my question though, I just wanted to give that little sidebar there. My question is relation to both of the questions that have been asked by Mr. Walter and Ms. Lindsey. So we've got several schools across the state that are low performing, correct? Do we have an idea or can we find information somewhere that tells us, okay, I don't know, Statesville City Schools has this many low performing schools and they were able to bring those schools out of low performance by this length of time? Is there data that shows us, you know, like what's the typical length of time it takes to get from low performing to not?
Great question.
It took me a long time to get there, but you get what I'm saying?
Because it is a, it's a well-intentioned question as well because that ultimately is what we hope to replicate if we find those exemplars, we find those things that work. As we know with many things, what works in one school doesn't always work in another.
Right.
There are some things that are transferable. One of the things we have is that we have a model within our own school system we can actually look to and say, what lessons can we learn from that? We have our own examples here and so being able to replicate those. One of the things I'll offer is this, is transition. Stability in leadership, stability with staff, and being able to build that community continuity, those are key ingredients. And as you know this, many of our, many low performing schools in general, they just, they're challenged with turnover, they're challenged with some instability. Those are the things right there in themselves that make some of the advancement of the effort somewhat more difficult to attain. And so when we look at the landscape of our current schools, that's perhaps a common denominator in place. And so our effort is making sure we get the right people in place in school leadership. That is step one. When you talk about what is that key differential, identifying the right person to be in place to lead those schools. And I can say confidently, I believe in my opinion, we have that in Cabarrus County schools.
Yeah, I know there's not a one-size-fits-all, but this is just my personal opinion, the people who make decisions think there is a one-size-fits-all. So my question was intended to see if there's a way we can identify where people are coming from low performing to not low performing in some timeframe. Is that even out there and available to look at?
I, go ahead. I don't know anything that speaks with it to that specificity that you offer, is what I'm offering. What you will find are, there are some key, there are best practices and there are those items to which your school systems are able to leverage do contribute to the likelihood of a turnaround school effort.
Thank you.
But in terms of, yes, ma'am, to say that there's a magic recipe and this is that, it's not quite that simple as you said.
I think all the questions are great questions and I know that you're not saying this, but I just want to remind all of us that, and I hear it in the answers in the conversation, which is healthy and good and I appreciate the discourse, we are a phenomenal school system. Not good, not great, phenomenal. We have unbelievable teachers, very strong, dedicated, outstanding administrators, and a community that supports us, starting with this Board of Education. That doesn't mean that we ever forget our task to always be improvement, to always be improving. We talk about continuous improvement all the time. There are areas of weakness and obviously some of these schools need a little extra help. But for me, it's always about access, resource, and opportunities. So some of our low performing schools just need more access to the resources and the opportunities that we provide here in the school system. It's much like some of our Title I schools need more funding to address some of the needs that they may have. So we supply that. I also want to say that, you know, Dr. Bowers pointed out really well and Carl Sane, our Director of Accountability, has presented this many times, the model's 80% performance, 20% growth, and that's really not the best model to measure student achievement with. Then you throw in all the variables that we've talked about tonight, we could be here for hours, as we all know, talking about the different things that children come to school with. They come with everything and the public school system has to deal with all of that and we do an exceptional job of that. Reminding all of us, we're in the top 10% as compared to the other 115 school systems in the state. 98% of our kids either attend a two-year or four-year college. That doesn't happen by mistake or enter the military or the workforce. That's 98% of our kids are going on a two-year or four-year school. That's because of great teachers and great administrators and a great community. And great communities build strong schools, we have that. 47% of our kids are earning college credit to the tune of over $20 million, $21 million in college scholarship. So I remind everyone, and I know you're not saying this, but let's also remember the wonderful things that have happened here. I say it all the time, public educators are the worst PR agents on the planet because we react instead of be proactive and tell our story. What is our narrative? Our narrative is that the Cabarrus County school system is phenomenal. If you just think of the last hour and a half, some of these we talked about and the exceptional people that you're dealing with, it talks to the greatness that exists here. And again, I sincerely mean this, that starts with our board. Our board is very invested. I see the work you're doing behind the scenes and the meetings you're attending and the events you're going to. It's beyond this meeting when, you know, the public doesn't know that, all of you were out at our Brown McAllister last week making sure that our school that is being built is being built appropriately and you're asking those questions. They don't know that you're at other events in the community that were going on this week to make sure that you're engaging with their public, all the way from Cox Mill up to Mount Pleasant. I mean, you were all over the place. So it's a big picture and I would just want to make sure that I remind them, well, let's not forget that picture. We will make sure that we continue to dedicate ourselves to kids first and provide the best learning environments for them, but we are a great school system and I will put us up against anybody because our teachers are the best in the nation as are administrators and they do an outstanding job every day. And we'll continue to get better and we won't, you know, the low performing list for me, it's a great metric for us to say, okay, here's the low performing schools that need extra supports and we need to come up with plans to address those issues so that we are holding ourselves accountable to make sure we're giving those students the access resources and opportunities that they need. You know, the public doesn't know this, but I know that in this last week, right now as we're talking about ELCs, we're doing our second benchmarks that are coming up. We're excited about that because we do believe we're seeing good achievement taking place and we're getting ourselves back to where we were. And then lastly, we are meeting with the principals again right now to do the second go-round of the data analysis as to, to the questions you were asking earlier. Ask your principals and looking at it for the second time this year, are we achieving the goals you said you're going to achieve? So we're holding them, does accountability built in to, I don't want to say hold them accountable, but the accountability is built in to make sure that what you say you're measuring, you're measuring and then we can grade it and say, okay, are you achieving that? Are we on the right stuff? And to me, the low performing schools list is just another way for us to say, are we putting things in place that are helping these kids achieve at the highest levels and maintaining high expectations? But I know I'm going on and on, but it's a great system and we have great people and I just don't want us to ever lose focus of that and I appreciate the support that you all give, so thank you. Dr. Bowers, you have anything else to offer on that or?
That's right. Nothing after that, that was well said.
I would like to ask, Dr. Kapicki, it and the state working now to recreate that school report card and what those metrics are.
Yeah, and that's great too. And I will be brief, I promise. But nothing fires me up more when I see the A, B, C, D, A, F, that grade, yes, it says something, but again, that doesn't measure to me the true success of what's going on in school. And to the state's credit, I believe that they are looking at that and saying there are more things that measure the success of the school and I think they are genuinely trying to put in other indicators to address how we grade schools. So I do believe, I want to say that the, last year was a lot of talk about what those measures would be, this year it's more talk about when they're going to finalize those and put those in place, I believe for the 2425 school year. I'm looking around, I want to say Sarah Reeves, I hate to put it in a spot, but I'm accurate on that, correct? Okay. Right, yeah, I know what they are, I just wanted to make, they haven't decided 100% as to what they are yet, but there are things in collaboration, things of that nature, but they should, they're to finalize those this year. So I'll leave it at that.
And just to say that some of our board members went to the North Carolina School Board Association and we were at the North Carolina DPI meeting where they talked about this. So there was a lot of conversation from board members to them about the need to address this. Okay, thank you.
You have any questions?
I think that's it.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to 7.03, and our career ladders and beginning teacher support with Dr. Michael Williams. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Williams, hold on just a second. Ms. Hacock, there's a question that you need to answer. Is that going on the consent agenda or the action agenda?
That is going on the consent agenda.
Thank you. All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am here tonight with Cortland Reeves, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and we're going to present ultimately two things, one embedded in the other. So state statute requires that we present the Beginning Teacher Support Plan to you, so we're going to do that tonight. But we're going to couch that in a bigger project that we've been working on that I shared with you back in the spring and again, at the beginning of this school year related to our career ladders and our Beginning Teacher Support Plan is a component of career ladders. At the end of the meeting tonight, I'm going to ask you to add just the Beginning Teacher Support Plan to the consent agenda. So again, the career ladders does not require, it's board, we are board, a share with you guys, but the Beginning Teacher Support Plan requires a board vote. So I wanted to make sure I began there. So this, our career ladders is a collaborative Cabarrus County Schools endeavor to support our employees as they grow across the arc of their career and what that looks like as they have opportunities. This is a collaborative project between Human Resources, who's taking the lead, but with all of our departments and our schools as we move forward. I did ask a few of our folks from Human Resources to be here with you tonight. I think there's some power in you seeing and meeting the folks that are actually carrying out the work. So I'll allow Mr. Reeves to take over and introduce those folks to you.
Sure, we are fortunate to be joined by a couple of our colleagues tonight. First, we have Ms. Kristy Caputo, who is brand new to our department, but we're so glad to have Kristi with us, coming to us from CC Griffin. She is serving now as our Career Educator Support Specialist. We also have Mr. Michael Peterson with us, who's our new HR Coordinator as of this school year. Um, a storied career here in Cabarrus County Schools, and we're glad he's working with us to support teachers and other educators throughout the district. Uh, we also have Angie McLean, who I know is not, uh, a stranger to this group. She is not here with us tonight due to a family emergency, but she is certainly a vital part of our operation in supporting our beginning teachers, which you'll get to hear a lot about tonight. And then finally, Mr. Dennis Hobbs is coming on board to joining us on, uh, January second. Mr. Hobbs has been a remarkable principal at JM Robinson for the last five years, and he's joining us now to support principals, assistant principals, and other district leaders as our Director of Professional Learning and Leadership. Again, he'll start on January second. Uh, in Cabarrus County Schools, and, and as part of this work with Career Ladders, it is our vision to provide opportunities for our Cabarrus County Schools employees to grow, learn, and advance across the arc of their careers. And, uh, this certainly shows up in our Destination Two Thousand Twenty-Five Strategic Plan in multiple ways, but tonight we'll focus on Priority Three, creating a diverse talent pipeline. Specifically, Objectives One, Three, and Four within Priority Three connect to this work with Career Ladders. Our commitment to developing our employees in unique and targeted ways certainly attracts, uh, talent to our district, but it also helps us to retain our best and brightest as we mentor them and as we provide them with professional learning opportunities along the way. And we do this important work by tapping into experienced and successful leaders, some of which I've mentioned earlier tonight, within our ranks, but also capitalizing on important partnerships that we have with local universities and other institutions.
And so, we're going to, to kind of trace a licensed pathway for you tonight. Um, I, I say that because we've taken the last year or so and really spent our time looking on what this looks like for, um, our, our, our teachers and our licensed educators. Uh, we are going to share some information with you about our next step, which is working on the career ladders for our classified employees. Um, and so, I'll let Mr. Reeves speak to that in a moment. But ultimately, when we look at licensed faculty, our goal is to develop experts who are equipped to grow others. Right now, we're really careful with how we phrase that. We had a teacher feedback session, um, over the summer at, at, um, with a teacher leadership group that was meeting, and we had originally framed this around, um, our teachers ultimately growing other teachers. And we had a wonderful, uh, twenty-nine-year veteran here in Cabarrus County who stopped us, and he said, "I don't have any desire to do anything except be really good at teaching kids." And it caused us pause as we floated this out, because what he really wants to do is teach kids. Now, I think in his teaching kids, he's going to have impact on his colleagues, right? Just through this practice of fractal change. But we were really careful to think about that because it, we took that, that phrasing out because we have some teachers who, when they get to the arc of their career, want to keep teaching and they want to grow kids. Right? And so, we've been very careful, as we've thought about and, and rolled out our pathways. I see Ms. Fugel smiling over here. Um, she gave me some feedback on this along the way. We've been very careful to make sure that that is a pathway, right? That there are lots of pathways that folks can choose to go down, but we've got some expert teachers who just want to be experts at teaching. Um, and so, we've made sure that we've made that one of the pathways that folks can consider. Ultimately, if you look across this arc of a career here, we, we need to spend some time looking at four different kind of buckets of things we're going to work on. The first one is, um, how we introduce the profession to young people who might consider teaching. Um, and so, we are beginning some work with our Curriculum and Instruction Department to look at, how does that play out in, in middle school CTE career classes, um, when they're doing career explorations? Um, in high school, what does that look like with a relaunch, uh, a really strong relaunch of teacher cadets? Um, and it was something that when I was a young teacher, that I had those folks in my room with me. That's kind of a, that's a really powerful tool that we have to recruit. Then, when we think about folks coming into the profession, um, we've obviously, as, as you guys are aware, um, our MOU with the Rowan Cabarrus includes, um, a pathway, a teacher education pathway. Uh, Mr. Reeves and I were, uh, at our job alike last week, and Union County is a little touch ahead of this with us, so we're going to catch up and get past them here shortly. Um, but they have, they've put this in place with Wingate University, and, uh, actually have scheduled some time with the folks at Wingate to have some conversations of what does this look like going from a, an early college into a four-year college. Uh, Dr. Kapiki and I, as we move forward, are, are, are talking about this idea of teaching scholarships. Like, what does that look like if we were to go out and, and find the, the funding to create our internal teaching fellows? Um, so, this is a priority for us. Of, of, can we send ten or fifteen of our high school seniors off to college to, to go get a degree in teaching and run our own internal teaching fellows? Um, you know, thirty-seven teachers right now, we, that number just went up this week, that are enrolled at Western Governors University, that are current teacher assistants in our district that are going down that pathway of teaching, and how do we set it up so that that's a structured pathway, rather than them finding that on their own and figuring out how to go back and be teachers? And then, and then finally, our university partnerships. What are we doing to, to work with UNC Charlotte and Pfeiffer and Catawba? Um, and, and quite honestly, Winston-Salem State has come on with us recently. Uh, Elizabeth City State has, has, uh, Ms. McLean is working on a partnership agreement with Elizabeth, Elizabeth City State right now. So, some very unique university partnerships. Right, and then our next bucket really looks at early career support. So, how do we onboard our new educators? What does that support look like during years one, two, and three? And how are we encouraging and, and again, paving that pathway for professional growth early in their careers? And then finally, as folks progress through their career, how do we help them become leaders and experts? Right? And so, tonight, you're going to learn about our educator leadership pathways. You'll see there that I'm being really careful to use the word educator and not just teacher, um, in our, our, uh, our teacher, our educator leadership series that's going on right now. We've got school social workers, we've got ITFs, we've got lots of different folks in different, um, in different jobs in our district that are joining us for those, for that professional development series. And so, we're thinking about educator leadership pathways. And then ultimately, we've got some folks that want to be school administrators. And so, what does that look like as we open the door for school administration? I'll hand it over to Mr. Reeves now to talk a little bit about our work in progress.
That's right. Well, we certainly have an ongoing desire to build capacity within our classified staff, and we are currently working to diligently strengthen this pipeline and develop strong growth opportunities for folks in these roles. You've heard a little bit already from Dr. Williams about our TA-to-teacher pipeline, and we certainly want to continue to, to build that and have, we have thirty-seven right now, but continue to grow that number. However, we also want to ensure that we have strong career trajectories for employees in other classified areas as well, starting with some strong recruitment tactics. So, if you look at the graphic here, uh, again, tapping into those middle school and high school CTE courses to let them know what particular, uh, career opportunities and pathways exist right here at home within Cabarrus County Schools. And, you know, we have a unique selling point, I think, that a lot of other industries may not have. If we hire somebody at nineteen or twenty years old, they could fully retire by age fifty and then move on to do something else with their lives if they want with a, a full pension and retirement. I think that's very unique, uh, that we are able to offer that other industries are not. Our recruitment effort, as I said though, must start early. This includes leaning on department leadership. So, my colleagues in Art Whitaker and Matt Herlock are over in Transportation, or Stephanie Almond in School Nutrition, these folks who can lock arms with us in HR to go out and talk about the great work that's being done in our school district, recruit folks certainly, uh, e- even within our own buildings as they're thinking about what's next. If they've, if they've got their mind on the workforce as they graduate high school, we want to, we want them to prioritize us as a school district first when they're thinking about their next job. This also means telling the good news of our departments, uh, and their work at various career fairs, through advertising avenues, and indirect recruitment again in our high schools. And of course, we're also committed to making sure that as employees come on board, that they get the training they need and the support they need to make sure they're successful in whatever job they select. And then, of course, we want to build a strong leadership pipeline within our employees coming on board in those areas, so that we have future managers and supervisors in the ranks as well.
And you'll find that these things are included in our next steps as we look at, um, our classified employees. That's our spring and summer work, is to begin setting up those work teams with our classified employees, uh, on those teams to help us build out those steps. So, I'm going to focus, uh, for the next few minutes around this licensed educator pathway. Um, we, uh, to, to kind of explain this graphic, this is what this looks like across the arc of someone's, uh, education, career in education as a licensed, uh, employee, a teacher, social worker. Um, and so, in the middle, you'll see that we've put a dotted line. And what that dotted line signifies to us is what we call a line of proficiency. And proficient in our HR world means that someone can do the job and do it well. That means that they are proficient at the job. When we do their teacher evaluations, that's what we're measuring is, is this, uh, accomplished, proficient, accomplished, distinguished, right? Proficient meaning that you are a really good teacher. Accomplished meaning that you are helping those around you, and distinguished meaning that you're leading in the profession. And so, what we've set up is this, this idea of a line of proficiency, that everyone in our district must reach that line of proficiency. They must be a good, solid teacher that does good work for children. Now, for us, we begin that work in their, uh, in their first three years. That work, uh, is led by Ms. Angie McLean, uh, who is a, uh, first off, a spectacular kindergarten teacher, but also, um, what we love to call, that one of the, the beginning teachers actually told us last summer, she is everybody's fairy godmother. Right? And if you spend any time with Ms. McLean, you know that there's something about that that's true. She's got a little magic pixie dust that she can sprinkle, but she really is driving our beginning educator support. Um, so, we're going to look at a little bit, this is our Beginning Teacher Support Plan. I'm going to walk you through with a graphic what was included in writing for you. Um, but our idea here is that we begin with beginning educator support. We begin onboarding and training, um, and professionally developing, and then we hand off for box number two here, and that really belongs to Curriculum and Instruction. So, our curriculum specialist and the curriculum, the CNI team really work with those educators to make sure they have those pedagogical and content skills they need in these first two boxes. I'll focus here on this Beginning Teacher Support and Growth. Now, to, to, you'll see this triangle pop up multiple times through our presentation. Um, to explain the triangle, that bottom area, and we use this quite often in, in multi-tiered, MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, um, you, in schools, we, we, this is what with the triangle, looks just like this. The white box at the bottom of the triangle is, we call that core. That's what every first-year teacher gets. Okay? So, in that core box that every first-year teacher gets, we hold an orientation in the summer that we appreciate many of you coming to. We have, uh, redone and revisioned that orientation to really drive making sure that folks understand what they're stepping into and how to be good at it on day one. Every new teacher in our building, every new educator in our, in our district receives an assigned mentor, and they work in a school with a lead mentor that is trained by Ms. McLean. Um, there are new teacher support resources that Ms. McLean has kind of cultivated with her team that, that there are new teachers and our new educators have access to. Content-specific professional development that comes from Curriculum and Instruction, uh, what we call an optimum working conditions guarantee, meaning that beginning teachers do not have to take on extra duties unless they choose to do so. So, for example, we can't take a first-year English teacher and say, "You also have to coach volleyball." Right? They, they may choose to coach volleyball, but an optimum working conditions guarantee means that we're not going to add extra duties on them. Um, and then finally, all of those folks get tiered support from the HR and the CNI teams. And tiered support means we've looked at our schools, we've applied some data points, and we've got some folks that are going in to do support based on, um, the needs in that school. So, some of our schools, for example, have about thirty percent of their teachers are beginning teachers. Right? And then we have a small elementary school in downtown Concord that has one. We are being very careful to put our support in places where it's necessary and needed so that we can support all teachers. It doesn't mean that that teacher at our little small elementary school doesn't need support. What it does mean is, that school has the capacity with a lot of veteran teachers to provide a lot of support, certainly more than a school that's got thirty percent of their teachers that are in their first three years. And so, we've tiered that support. Then, when you slide up to that yellow box, we are providing additional tiered support. And this is what that looks like if we find a beginning educator who is struggling, and we use multiple data points. We're taking a look at benchmarks, we're looking at evaluations. Ms. McLean sends a survey out at the end of each quarter so that they can give us feedback on how things are going. We are using a school-level process map to make sure that the school is providing support. So, we've given the principals a roadmap of, here's what you do if someone is struggling. Right? Here are the things that you can work on at the school level. Then, we have hired a handful of new teacher coaches who are able to go out. And so, in this yellow box that we, that those new teacher coaches with Ms. McLean may invite some of those folks in for a PD, right? So, we may bring them in to do, for example, um, Classroom Management Boot Camp that Angie, uh, McLean and Karen Holler work on together, and when we find some teachers that are just struggling, for example, to get kids to line up or given instructions. Right? Those are, those are skills that we can learn. It happens, right? When we get folks that we're hiring that have not come through schools of education, and they're coming in as residency or permit to teach teachers, we are having to provide that support. And some of them come in very naturally, and other folks need a little bit of a push there. Um, and so, we have these, these levels of professional development that are more group-oriented, that we can bring folks in for additional PD. And then finally, for folks that are still struggling after that level of support, we have two, uh, retired teachers that are phenomenal, who, um, are out and they are visiting and staying more extended periods of time in classrooms. So, for example, if we get a teacher who's on a permit to teach that, that really wants to be a good teacher and just doesn't know how yet, we can ask Lisa Haney, who is a retired teacher in our district, and Lisa will go out and take a two-week assignment in that classroom to help support and coach that teacher through the things that she or he needs to be successful in that room. And again, that, we can't do that for everyone. We don't have the capacity or the ability to do that, but also, everyone doesn't need that. Um, so, these are the things that you will read in the, in Angie's plan, um, that, that we've put in place. And again, what I want you to grasp here is that this is layered support. So, every, we don't, when we add a yellow box, we don't remove a white box, right? That, that, that teacher continues to get core support. Um, and this is what our Beginning Teacher Support and Growth Plan, um, looks like. The, make sure I get us to the right spot. So, the second thing we want to talk about is what happens after someone finishes year three, right? So, we put, Angie worked very hard with her team, supports through, we make sure that, uh, those folks stay with us, that they're well-prepared, that they're good teachers, and then the question becomes what happens next. Um, again, what you'll see here is the yellow box has moved to the right, so we've jumped that line of proficiency. Now, folks don't have to decide to do that. We've got teachers that are going to become really good teachers, and that's what they want to do, is teach their kids in their classroom and be good at it. We'll continue to grow them, but we also have folks that want to take leadership opportunities. And in years past, Cabarrus County Schools had an opportu- a, a place for folks to do that called the Teacher Leader Cohort, but it was capped at about thirty to thirty-five teachers a year. So, they, uh, initially were nominated for many years by their principals, and if your principal didn't nominate you, you didn't have a chance to go in. Um, and then last year, we made an adjustment, and we opened it up for teachers to self-nominate, and we went up on the number to about forty. Um, and then we, we took nearly everybody who applied, but we, uh, there was a, a little bit of a rubric that happened there. Um, and then I felt very strongly that we should, just should not deny anyone an opportunity to develop their leadership skills. And so, this year, uh, at the beginning of the school year, we removed the nomination process for the first box called Educator Leadership Series. Um, so, we've changed that from the cohort to a series, and it's a professional development series, um, that folks have an opportunity to participate in, in order to grow their leadership skills, and, and we opened it up to any teacher past year th- who has started year three that wants to be involved and wants to learn. So, I want to let Cortland explain a little bit about what that looks like.
Similar to our beginning teachers, here we have this orientation of professional learning offerings in the pyramid schema there. This is for our career educators, starting with the core knowledge and skills down there at the bottom. This is what everyone is receiving, experience in professional learning communities or PLCs, as we call them, unpacking standards and learning about instructional design and instructional best practices as well. So, everyone is getting that. And Michael mentioned that the Educator Leadership Series is now open to anyone, but the reason it's on the next sort of rung of this pyramid is because it is an opt-in. Not everyone is going to want to pursue that, but we want to make sure that it is available to any teacher who has completed at least , uh, three years of teaching. And so, you see that next, and there are four courses there that you see in yellow that are open to everyone. You'll hear just a little bit about those in a moment. Instead of this being an exclusive opportunity though, those are open to folks who, who want to explore that. What I will say is that what I'm learning, being new to the district, uh, my anniversary, five months, is coming this week. It feels like a, a whirlwind, but what I have seen and really appreciate about Cabarrus County Schools is exactly what Dr. Williams said, which is that we want to make sure that people have opportunities to be outstanding teachers. It's not always about moving into administration. In fact, leading adults is a very different ballgame than, than leading children, and we want kids that are, or teachers that are great at leading kids. Uh, and then in the top level there in green, this represents our educator leadership pathways for which our educators may choose to apply after completing that entire leadership series that you see depicted in yellow. And we'll talk more in a moment about what those various educator leadership pathways are that are available to our career licensed employees.
All right. So, I want to, very quickly, just kind of, um, allow Kristi Caputo, who's new to our department, who's leading much of this work with our career educators, to share just very briefly with these four pathways, these four courses.
All right. Hello. So, these are the four base, uh, courses that would be taken through the educator leadership pathway. Um, and these four courses focus on strong leadership skills, um, best practices, and it's actually- based around seven best practices for classroom and teaching, and then how to handle a difficult conversation. And we learn that through crucial conversations. And once a teacher has gone through, or an educator, I'm sorry, has gone through these four courses, they can apply to be put into a pool to move to that top tier and take as far as going on the leadership pathway for an educator in our county.
Good. So those formal leadership pathways look like this, and we're going to overview them very quickly for you. We can certainly share more information with you at a later point if you, if you wish. But we have six open, six pathways that folks can choose to go down now. These are continuing to develop, and so as we continue to do the work and work with our teachers to see what pathways are out there, we'll continue to grow them. So on the top left, you have advanced teaching roles, and these are opportunities for teachers to expand their reach in one of two ways right now. They can either take on additional students for compensation. And there, we, again, we're trying to leverage the impact of our best teachers, and we've got some great things happening out there right now in very planned, designed spots where we have phenomenal teachers who just want to have a, a broader impact on kids. And so we see that happening. And then we also have some places in elementary right now where Dr. Parker's done a phenomenal job setting up multi-classroom leaders, where we have some partial release teachers who are teaching part of the day and coaching their colleagues other part of, other parts of the day, and they're being compensated for that work. Secondly, Angie's not here, but to talk a little bit about mentors, so we are beginning, she is beginning to rework the mentoring program. We've got a couple of pilots in places at schools where we're doing some intense mentor training. There's a, she does a really good job and there's a mentor training piece that we have in place. I would say that we've got to get better at that. And so I've, I've charged Angie with that work, and so part of that is being able to compensate our mentors, and so we are looking, that is allowable under Title II, and so the state eliminated that compensation some years ago. We are working right now on a couple of pilot spots where we are able to begin putting it back in place with our really expert, highly-trained beginning teacher mentors. In addition, we've got some pieces where we've got professional development leaders working with curriculum and instruction around our curriculum writing teams in the summer. And so Leanne Havelley, who's the PK-12 Curriculum Coordinator, is actually working with our pool now to lift folks out that might want to be curriculum writers. I'm going to hand it over to Michael Peterson really quickly and let him speak just a moment about National Board Certification. This is the project he's currently working on.
So thank you for having me tonight. So I've been working with a cohort for all the people that are interested in pursuing the National Board Certification. So the National Board Certification for Teachers is a prestigious credential that recognizes and validates the expertise of experienced educators. Developed by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, this voluntary certification goes beyond state licensure and assesses teachers against rigorous standards. Candidates engage in a comprehensive process that includes submitting a portfolio of classroom work, providing evidence of their impact on student learning, and participating in a content knowledge assessment. Achieving National Board Certification signifies a teacher's commitment to excellence and demonstrates their effectiveness in the classroom. It's a mark of distinction that is widely respected in the education community, showcasing a teacher's dedication to continuous improvement and the success of their students. This reflective process incorporates pedagogy and varying years of personal experience focused on continuing improvement of student and staff learning through data collection and analysis. It develops strong instructional leaders throughout our county. Currently, we have 255 nationally board certified teachers here in Cabarrus County, and by getting this certification, each has increased their pay by 12% and has positively impacted countless students across our district because of this accomplishment. Our cohort is helping teachers meet their goals of National Board Certification while focusing on the needs of our Cabarrus County students.
And so Mr. Peterson is running a cohort now that we are able to provide some financial support as they apply for National Board Certification, and they are able to get through teams meetings, support in writing the prompts that they need for National Board Certification.
And face-to-face.
And face-to-face meetings as well. And so the final two here, we are, Ms. McLean is actively recruiting our recruiters out of the Teacher Leader Cohort at this point, Teacher Leader Series this, at this point. And then finally, I'll let Mr. Reeves wrap up this slide with, of looking at Principal Fellows.
Sure. Finally, we have the North Carolina Principal Fellows Program, which is a prestigious leadership and growth opportunity with deep roots in our state of North Carolina. We have many Cabarrus County, current, current Cabarrus County school leaders who are former fellows of the North Carolina Principal Fellows Program, and we have four fellows that are in the program right now. Principal Fellows is an intensive, two-year, all-expense-paid and degree awarding program that affords prospective principals in this two-year cohort experience. During the first year, participants remain in their school-based role, and they're participating in rigorous coursework during this time over at the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. And then in year two, these folks take on and engage in a full-time administrative internship in one of our Cabarrus County Schools. And I'm thrilled to announce that our selection process for the next cohort of North Carolina Principal Fellows representing Cabarrus County Schools is underway now.
Perfect. So I'll walk us through the last few pieces here in looking at what this looks like for assistant principals and principals, again, looking all the way across the career. So our point person for our assistant principal leadership pathways is Mr. Hobbs. What we're working on there, and I'll show you what this looks like, is, is going from onboarding through what we are calling our aspiring principal cohort, right? So from the time you are, become an assistant principal until you move into that spot where you're ready for a principalship. Again, the idea here that everyone must get to that line of proficiency, right? What we, we need are, are good administrators who are well-trained, that can do the job, and then opportunities for folks who want to go for, to go further. What this looks like, and I'm not going to read through everything for you here, but I'll kind of give you an idea of what it, what we do here. So for assistant principals, we've set up a three-year cycle of professional learning that happens upon their hire. That is in the white, and all of our new assistant principals go through this professional development series that looks at things like if they haven't had, yet had crucial conversations, they're going to take it. Because you know what you do as an assistant principal? You have crucial conversations with folks, and we need to make sure they're well-trained. Relay is a, a feedback protocol, instructional leadership, effective discipline, and what you will see in year two, we expand upon those things. In year three, we expand upon, again, so that we can make sure that all of our assistant principals are, are prepared and proficient and good at the job by the end of year three. Then we move into that yellow box for folks who have completed their third year. We're going to be offering, I'll show the list in just a second because it matches for principals and APs, professional development around instructional managerial and leadership skills. And so folks can opt into it. There are no restrictions on who can move into those courses. All of our APs will have an opportunity to do so if they wish. And then we've created an aspiring principal cohort that I've shared a bit about with you guys, that, that really is taking our folks and growing them into the principalship. Same thing with principal leadership. What you see here is from a time, what does it look like when a principal is hired and how do we onboard, up to what we vision as principal executive roles. And so you'll see years one and two and three and what that professional development looks like and support for our new principals, the opportunity for any principal to then after year three, engage in further professional learning to grow. And then we're beginning some conversation around what does, what do executive principal roles look like? And so I, I offer to you this, of, you know, Chris Myers is our Cabarrus County Schools' Principal of the Year. He is a phenomenal principal. And what we've got to begin doing is figuring out how do we leverage someone like Chris Myers to support our beginning principals? And how do we make sure that he is both rewarded and compensated for that, right? So what does that look like in the use of our Title II funds? Just as a very general idea here, our administrative leadership series contains these types of things, so really looking at how to grow as an instructional leader. What does that look like around operations and finance and school safety and time management and organization? And then our idea is that we will be utilizing the expertise of lots of our principals, assistant principals, and great teachers who've come through our leadership cohorts to lead book studies. So as they find something they want to share with others, we then set that up where folks are able to engage in those book studies so we're, can stay in this state of constant growth. So our next steps in spring, summer of 2024 is we'll complete our team, we will implement our core systems, meaning our goal by the end of this school year is everything in those white boxes in the triangle will be in place by the end of the school year. That we will set up initial opportunities for our leadership series. Those are going on right now for teachers, assistant principals. And some of our principals, we are, we've launched our aspiring, aspiring principal cohort. And in fall of 2024, so next fall, we will launch full leadership series, so anything involved in those, in those yellow boxes will be in place and going. We will continue our educator leadership series. We will launch many of those educator pathways, kind of officially, and, and be advertising and recruiting and marketing to get folks into them. And we'll design out the team for classified employees to begin the design process, we'll actually begin that this summer. And then in spring of next year, spring 2025, we would plus those leadership series, taking feedback, how do we improve them, design the team for the executive principal roles that could be in place, and then an initial launch of the classified employee leadership series next spring. So again, we'll take, I'll take any questions from you tonight, but as a, as just a reminder here, the vote that we would ask that you would put on consent for us is the document that was attached that is the Beginning Teacher Support Plan that I summarized when we talked about Beginning Teacher Support. So I will hush and take any questions that you might ask for us.
Ms. Escobar.
Thank you all for being here. It's super exciting to hear, to hear this. I'm just thinking as other leaders, just the fact that you can like sit around and talk about learning and leading each other, like, just exciting conversations and, and what that means for our staff. It's wonderful to start somewhere, and we have amazing beginning teachers, but to know that you could have your entire career here. And I know 50 sounds old when you're 19, but that is not old, and that's amazing that we really could start exciting middle schoolers to then go through this. So I love this. Thank you so much for all the hard work. The question that I have is related to the beginning teachers. So that bottom pyramid, that's the stuff you get whether you ask for it or not.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, no, I think that's important because I think it's really hard, especially if you're young, but we'll, we'll have beginning teachers who are not necessarily 19, 20 years old. We'll have beginning teachers who will be 30, second career TAs, people, things like that. But I do think that there's this impression, especially as a teacher, that you have it all together, and you might look like you have it all together, but you need help. And so I just want to encourage you to, and I know Angie's amazing, so I'm sure she's found them, but there's going to be people who aren't going to ask for help, and I'm sure they're doing a wonderful job, but our, we have amazing staff in, in Cabarrus County. And so there's a lot of people that are willing to help. And so just note, you, you look for them and make sure you take care of them. But thank you so much for this. I really appreciate it.
Angie, I've had lots of conversations about what we call standard treatment protocols, meaning that when folks start positions, there's a standard, just like physicians follow a standard treatment protocol, we have to do the same. It's how we make sure that folks have the foundational skills they need to be successful.
And then the, the last question, you had talked about how you've sort of mapped out where, like this, this school has this percentage of new teachers, this school does, you know, that sort of thing. I don't need it now, but I am cur, I am curious how many teachers are in each of our schools in that, in those first three years.
Got it.
I would hear that. Thank you.
Ms. Lindsay.
Thank you, guys, for this. I, I'm, I'm also, I echo what Ms. Escobar said. I've spoken to several teachers that have felt a little bit overwhelmed with our beginning teacher. We, we had a beginning teacher program where you were supposed to have like that backing, and I guess they didn't really feel that that was helpful. And so we've lost some beginning teachers. I guess one of my questions is, and I don't know exactly what the percentage is of beginning teachers that we've lost because they didn't have the support like they felt that, that they needed versus how are you going to gauge that to make sure that this new program that you're implementing is successful and that we are able to retain those beginning teachers moving forward?
It's a great question. So the answer is yes, that has happened, right? Like there have been places, I'd say there are really two parts to it. Angie's surveys that we've implemented this year are, are super helpful for us in terms of just giving people an opportunity to have a voice so that they can share with us. Our new teachers being out and around, we have, one of our retirees is actually just floating around doing check-ins. So it's again, it's paid for for out of Title II funds, it's allowable under Title II, but he's visiting our beginning teachers to drop off his swag bag, check in, he, Angie has him on a cycle, visiting schools so that we're, we've got the one-on-one, we were missing, we just absolutely were missing that, and so we've created that. And then I would say, out of all of that, really revisioning what the beginning teacher mentor program looks like is, is going to be a big piece of the puzzle, because what we have to do is make sure that those, and it was, and it was, I was a lateral entry first-year teacher many, many years ago, right? Sam remembers when I showed up. And the thing that made the difference for me, I actually talked to her on the phone last night, was that mentor who helped me understand and know what to do. So we recognize the importance of that. We also know that that's difficult when the state pulled that funding. It became hard to find mentors. So really rethinking through how we're using those Title II funds to, to be able to get the right mentors in place is going to be a big piece of the puzzle.
Well, and I am glad that you've also expanded the leadership program because I, I know a lot of, of teachers who were interested in that as well and didn't get the opportunity to do that. So I'm glad that that has been expanded for anybody that's interested in doing that.
We crossed, we've crossed 120 teachers who've been in a session so far this year. So we did them in October and November, and we've been over 60 both times with, with teachers who have signed up, and the, the feedback has been just really, really positive of, of, one, it's really good information, it's really good professional learning, but two, they're just happy that they aren't having to battle and vie for the seats. They sign up, we buy them pizza, and they come out and we teach them, learn.
You can get anybody with pizza, right? My other question, sorry, one more. So you mentioned that we have four principal fellows?
We do.
Okay. So I have a question about that, because last year when we had this discussion, there was supposed to be three principal fellow slots and one alternate. And one of the questions that I had was about the way that they chose that alternate slot. And we stated that we were only going to specifically do those three original slots and that the fourth slot was not going to be taken.
So it's a person from a previous year, so there's two cohorts floating through right now. Our, we have three from last year, we have one remaining from the previous year who is finishing an internship. And is, the other principal fellows from that year have already been hired.
Okay. So this is an extra, or this is a carryover?
That's correct.
It's not a, okay.
Yeah, it's a two-year, it's a two-year cycle.
Okay, awesome.
We follow what we said we're going to follow. I know what you're asking.
Okay.
We did, we did exactly.
But you know why I was confused?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, you're always going to have more than the previous year because you've got folks that, that there's two cohorts active, one doing coursework and one in an internship.
Right.
And those folks roll through. What we find is those people are really good and they're really smart, so they tend to pick up jobs early and they'll phase out. There really should be about eight, six folks that are in it, three from one year, three from the next year.
Gotcha.
There's one remaining from that first cohort.
No, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. I appreciate you, you clarifying.
Ms. Sandich.
Are you talking about the one for the diversity? One was supposed to be included in diversity, for diversity? I got you. So I wanted to ask a few questions. Thank you so much for this presentation. I, I really appreciate the breakdown. So how do you identify the TAs that want to become teachers or educators?
Correct question. So Ms. McLean did much of that work. I wish she were here tonight to be able to really talk. So she did a marketing piece that went out through principals, through our, quite honestly, a lot of our EC lead teachers. We, we marketed directly through, that's where you're finding a lot of those folks, some direct emails, and then she went out, I mean, Angie really did the footwork. She went out when principals gave us a name, when teachers indicated an interest, Angie went out and she either got on teams or she went out and she met with people. And so when I tell you it was one by one, one-on-one, that, that really looked like that. So as we receive names, we, we've really done a connection between those folks and whichever university best fits their situation. Many are at Western Governors, we've also got quite a few at UNC Charlotte, depending on what degree they already hold.
And that's the 37 number that you said?
Yeah, that 37 number is kind of a combination of all of those folks.
And how many universities or colleges are there to pick from?
Oh, many.
Okay.
So any, anywhere in North Carolina that, that offers a teacher preparation program can be an option. There, there, I, I couldn't begin to tell you the number.
No worries.
Yep.
And then the extra pay for additional students, what does, what does that look like?
So yeah, that, it's advanced teaching roles. Um, so yeah, that, it's Advanced Teaching Rules. I can share some information with you about that. It's a, a little difficult to explain in, in a brief amount of time. Ultimately, I'll, I'll give you a great example. We have a, a teacher at one of our elementary schools who has, that school has elected to hire a, a beginning teacher, a great setup, a veteran teacher who has proven effectiveness, partnered with a first-year, a second-year teacher who is still learning, a resident, actually a residency teacher who is still learning, and a teacher assistant. And instead of hiring three teachers, that school has elected to trade in some positions to hire the teacher assistant. The lead teacher is taking ownership of all of those students. Those students are rotating, so every kid in that, in that grade level gets access to that highly effective teacher. The second-year teacher is doing small groups, so they're working on iReady, on other pieces, some math iReady, some, some digital pieces, and being pulled by, in small groups. Our lead teacher's helping the beginning teacher figure out the groups and what to do in the groups. And our TA is doing remedial skills with another group of kids, for kids who are missing back skills that we need to accelerate so we can catch those, those kids up. What we're seeing is, you know, a couple of things. Every kid gets access to that, to that great teacher, right? This is, this school's doing this on three grade levels, gets access to that great teacher. Our beginning teacher is being taught how to teach by a great teacher, but also not teaching 30, 25, or 30 kids at a time. And our teacher assistant is working on things that, that the lead teacher kind of lays out and says, here's what I want you to do with them when they're with you, and then you're going to give me the feedback and we're going to work through it. The trade-in of that teacher allotment for a teacher assistant is called an ABC sheet. Mr. Penn helps me with those when they come in. And the money that was saved with the trade-in from the teacher to the teacher assistant can go back to the lead teacher as a supplement for owning that entire process.
Okay. I have a, a follow-up question, but I'll get to that one after this one. So the retention specialist, we talked about that some, several meetings ago, and I didn't hear about that here. Did I miss that somewhere?
She's involved in this work.
Okay.
So she is a, she is a clerical, that's a, that's a classified position. So she's not one of our licensed employees. She is carrying out pieces of much of this work. She will be integral in the, in the development of the classified, the classified plan as we begin to put that in place.
Okay. And then just, and this may be a Mr. Penn question, but you made me think of it. So the unused salaries that we, where we don't have somebody in a position, what happens to that, that funding? Where, where does that go?
I am not going to attempt an answer on that. I mean, I will get that wrong. I have an idea, I know, but I can't explain it as well.
Okay.
No, I, there's a handful of ones where we've seen some of these trades. It could be a slight increase in expense. There's a holdback that we do where we, we, we set some money aside. Because when we go and we budget for these things, they're set on an average teacher salary. There's no guarantee that what the actual salary of somebody coming in the door is going to be when they're hired, right? So, so there's, there's, we, we kind of hold that back as a hedge against if we were hiring teachers at a higher rate than what was built into that process. If, in theory, if they all went in your favor at the end of the year, it would wind up being something that could potentially help offset the deficit.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's where I was getting, right? So when will we know that information?
Soon as we're all done with the ABC transfers.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penn.
Mr. Walter?
Thank you for your passion, Michael, and this program. And I think it's great that we're focusing our retention and our, and our teachers beyond just the compensation piece of that. There's a lot involved in it, and I-
Lot of moving parts.
A lot to promote as well. But as we just got done with the budget presentation, is, is this, are we being restricted at all based on the-
So this is all federal funds? So our work here is all done out of federal funds, and so those funds are designated for what we've designed for you.
The Title II funds that you were talking about.
Title II funds, and they're to be used just for this.
So that's, that's good, too. Going back to, I guess, to teacher, Beginning Teacher Plan, couple of questions on that. And I guess we had a question earlier, how many first-year teachers, second-year teachers, and third-year teachers do we have?
I'll get that data for you.
And you're, are you keeping track of the retention?
We are.
For those cohorts?
Yes, sir. And I can get that for you.
Because that goes back to how do we measure, measure success of that program? How do we measure success of it? Is that just retention? Is that, is there, you were talking about improving teachers and making them good teachers? How do we?
Yeah, and again, that, you know, that's, that's hard to me, I would say that's hard to measure sometimes. A lot of that's coming back on, a lot of, lots of pieces of our retention. I, I think we can also take a look at the, the North Carolina Educator Evaluation System of, do we see them progressing to accomplished and distinguished as they work their way through?
Okay. When was the last time we approved this program?
Uh, you did this last year.
Okay. I didn't remember seeing it last year, was it?
Uh, Dr. Bish brought it to you.
Okay. Those are all my current questions, other than I'd like to see the last time there was a bunch of attachments, A through L or something, I-
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
There was a bunch of attachments to the, to the piece, to the agenda item. I'd like to see those, A through L.
Shouldn't have been. I just had two documents.
I can, well, these are in previous, previous years, they've been here a while.
Okay, I'll take a look for you.
Usually they've taken some good detail and, and provided a lot of additional information. There was also a cost associated with that, with the program itself, so is there, do you have that?
That's a great question. So yeah, that's, I understand now. So in years past, there was a new teacher support contract that was attached to this. We've moved that contract out, and we've taken that back in internally with our own, with our own folks. So that financial obligation that sat with this in previous years does not exist any further.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, we've canceled that, with that contract. We, we did not, we were not getting the, the impact from that contract that we believed we should be getting. We feel like we can do that better under Ms. McLean's leadership.
Okay. I think that's all I had written down right here. Thank you.
But I will take a look and make sure that I've got everything there for you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, board members? Mr. Treadaway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Bowers, no disrespect, but at the end of the day, I think most parents or grandparents of second graders are, are not as, quite as in, invested in improvement plans as the teacher in front of their student. And I just want to applaud and thank the HR folks that are behind this. I'm, I'm old enough to remember when we were the model for mentoring beginning teachers. And I see this as a pathway back to that leadership. I mean, we had folks from all over the state came here. And we kind of lost our way for a while, and I'm, I'm glad that we are back at, at, at finding that. Because at the end of the day, we're in the people business. And I see people first here. And I want to also applaud, I saw David James. Uh, I have, I had the pleasure of working with Mr. James, great educator. I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Peterson. I know some of the other folks in, in your department. And I, I'm just glad that even within our department, we're modeling a way for leadership from within. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
So you said you identified a service that was there that you didn't need to use anymore, so you were able to save that money?
It is, but that was Title II funding. It was federal funding. So that money, that funding doesn't revert back.
The point still is the same. Is that what you were referring to, Mr. Penn, earlier, where you went across the, oh, good gracious, district administrators, and you guys found 1.4 million dollars? It's, no, that-
That's not included in that 1.4 million.
Okay. But, but is, is that similar to what is happening across the board? And we're able to find money that way? That, that goes to my question about vendors and identifying vendors that we aren't using, where we can pull that money back, just so you know what I'm asking for in my email.
That, that's correct.
Any other questions? Okay, board members, does a board agree to put this on the consent agenda for December 11th work session?
I'd like to see it on action. I'd like to see it on action next week, just more, more time for me to review your presentation based on, and read that document, make sure it's all included.
So we'll put this on the action agenda. Thank you.
We aren't missing any timelines. Are you good with, okay.
Okay, we'll move to 7.04, our policies for approval on first read. And first, our Board Attorney, Gil Middlebrooks, wants to update the board on policy 3210.
Yes, I'm, I'm asking that we pull that one so that I can give it a bit more attention.
Okay, so pull policy 3210 off of our list. Okay. Hi, Dr. Ward.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. K., and Ms. Carey. It's good to be here this evening with you all. Congratulations, Madam Chair, on a second term. You're doing a great job. Congratulations to Mr. Treadaway and Rob, thank you for your work as the Vice Chair. As most of the speakers talked tonight, I also want to thank the Policy Committee for the work that we have been doing to try to come up with policies that will integrate ideas from every department that we have, from our cabinet members, our directors, two of our board members, Mr. Treadaway and Mr. Walters, who also serve on our team, down to the administrators from each school. This, this endeavor takes everyone, right? We want to hear the perspective of everyone when we're doing policies. In particular, when we look at the policies that have been impacted by the Parents' Bill of Rights, there are seven policies that we have been studying very carefully since September, and we have visited them in every single board meeting. We've taken notes, we've made revisions, we've been back and forth with our attorneys. And so I think now before you, you will see what we feel is the best version of these policies with us adding what is required, right? So what I'm going to show you here now is everything on the policies that you see in red is required. So I'm going to walk you through the summary of the PLS update. Okay, we're all good with that? All right. So policy 1310-4002 was the most substantially revised policy in this packet, right? It is nine pages long, and as you flip through, board members, you can kind of scan on your own. And as our people in the back kind of scan, you can see that all the red there was added in, and it is required. So our team felt there was not a lot that we needed to do with this policy except to add in what was required. So what you have before you is in Section G, we filled in some custom language. We included some minor editorial changes that were recommended. We had to update, update the legal references, which was required. And we updated the, the cross-references, which was recommended. So as you can see, 3210, very extensive. Everything in red was required by law. 1310. And our team went through, we've gotten advice from our attorneys, and this is what we've come up with. Do we have any questions on 1310, which is parental involvement? And this talk, really talks about how parents can and should be involved, right? In their student's education, right? They should be. It's sad we have a, a policy that says that, that we have to, but we do have a policy now. And it talks about how you can get involved with school improvement, parent conferences, parenting support for those parents who need a little bit more support, parent, parental events that are happening. So it just kind of guides every school district on what they need to do to involve parents. Questions?
Any questions, board members, on this policy? No question.
Okay. Our next policy would be 3540, which is the Comprehensive Health Education Program. Here, there were two changes, which you can see in red. I'll read this one to you because this is also captured in the actual Bill of Rights, SB 49. So this is captured there. But the PLS and our North Carolina School Board Association thought it was important to also capture it in this policy. And it reads as follows, "Instruction on gender identity, sexual activity, or sexuality will not be included in the health education in kindergarten through fourth grade. See also policy 1310-4002," which we just saw, which talks about parental involvement. So that was the addition. And our team accepted that addition because it is the law, right? So we wanted to make sure that it was in there, even though it is also captured in the, the actual Bill of Rights. We updated some legal references and some cross-references for 3540. Do we have any questions on 3540?
Any discussion?
Okay. Next, we have 4335, which is criminal behavior. When we look at that policy, there were some changes on the backside, and I will note them for you. Changes requirement for reporting to parents when their child is suspected to be the victim of a crime, which is something we already do, right? But it is required, so it's there. I'll read that for you. "In addition, the principal or designee must promptly notify parents if a school system employee suspects that any criminal offense has been committed against the parent's child, including but not limited to any of the offenses required to be reported to law enforcement, regardless of where the offense allegedly occurred, unless," and this is a big one, "the incident has been reported to law enforcement or the County Child Services Agency, and notification of the parent will impede the investigation." Basically saying if the parent is involved with a crime against their child, we, we really can't tell them at that point. And that is also required, along with legal references. Any questions?
Any questions, board members?
All right. Next, we have 4720, which is the survey of students. Right there in the very first sentence, they have us add state law, right? So it says, "The superintendent shall ensure that all notifications and other requirements of state law, the principal, the protection of pupil rights amendment are met, including all legal requirements regarding the surveying of students." So this is also addressed in the actual Bill of Rights. This policy defines what protected topics are for those in our community who may not be aware. If you read through there, you can see what is considered a protected topic. It lists new requirements when we survey students on protected topics. It talks about parental notification. We need to notify our parents at the beginning of the school year that we will be surveying students on those, and we tell them which survey is going to be given. And we also have to gain parent consent. So they actually have to opt in now, not opt out, right? So we're going to have this survey. We need to get the parents to say, yes, they can. And if they don't, they will not be taking it. Opt in instead of opt out. Huge difference. Huge. Okay? So a lot, you see a lot of red there, a lot of required language in this bill, in this policy. They added a whole new section about well-being questionnaires. That was a big thing. Asking students how they're feeling, if you feel safe and all these things. Some people really feel like that's diving in too deep. It is what it is. But that Section B is required, so it is in there, okay? And there are other minor editorial changes that are there. And we updated the legal references.
Any questions? Ms. Escobar?
Thank you.
Sure.
And thank you to the members of the committee who, from what I understand, had lengthy conversations about this. So I appreciate the time and effort that it takes to put all this red into the policies. I guess my question is, if you're going to do a survey that requires parents to opt in at the beginning of the year, and we're begging people to fill out free lunch forms where they benefit for free, you know, get lunch for free, and we don't necessarily get 100% that qualify. Do we have some sort of mechanism to evaluate the value of the survey if we don't have the majority of students taking it?
Well, that's a great question. I believe some of like the EOC surveys, some of these things are required. Am I right? Anybody who you're talking about, sir?
It's a great question. I don't think there's any, I just don't think there's a solid, like, response to that, like, as I said here, because, to use your example, we, we're constantly asking to, we're constantly trying to increase our participation in the free reduced, right? Because that directly impacts our, our schools in a lot of different ways. I think, for lack of a better way to say it, I think one of the best ways to evaluate the surveys is by participation, right? And try and check the norms as to, I think of our K-12 insight survey. We give that out, we give that out at the end of the year to try and get feedback from parents on things. I believe the last two years, we had a 35%, about 38% participation rate, which, believe it or not, is considered excellent. It's, it's, it's considered above the national norm. And you would think that's really not all that great, right? So I think, I think it depends on what, I think it depends on the survey you're giving, what are you trying to measure. You know, our panorama, we give that to third, 12th grade. We get pretty much probably high participation, I'd say 95% above on that, Dr. Roth, probably, for the most part, give or take. That's an in-house survey that we give, then, and we kind of control the environment of that, right? So I just think there are a lot of factors, variables that, that are very different ser-, different surveys that we give, and there's not a, a ton of them as to how much participation we get. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
I understand. I just, I think there's a value to the surveys in the sense that, you know, we're identifying kids that need help. We're trying to find the kids that aren't, like I was saying earlier about a teacher. There's going to be kids that fly under the radar, and when you're in a school system of 35,000 kids, and we want to serve them to the best of our abilities, it's helpful to know how they're feeling and doing. And if we have to require parents, and I get it, it's the law, but I'm just saying, if we have to require parents to opt in, we might not have a true sense of what's going on.
What I wanted to say is for our panorama, Dr. Roth, is that's not an opt-in. The panorama survey?
No, no, no.
Because it's not really a protected topic. We can ask how they're feeling, but we can't go into, okay, what is your family's political affiliation, what is your family's this or that? And so when we talk about the opt-in, it's for those protected surveys. So they get pretty, if you look at this, I'll just give you a couple of them. Political affiliations, mental or psychological problems, sexual behaviors or attitudes. So when we ask, when we ask survey questions of that nature, that's when the parents have to opt in, opt their students in.
But like suicidal ideation, is that on that list?
Suicidal. No.
No, no.
No, I think it's more of a well, no, I don't think we ask that. We ask, how are you feeling?
Okay.
You don't ask any questions about that.
No.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
The questions are on the website. If you want to look at them.
Okay. I just, I just, I just don't want, I understand our parents are busy, I, as a parent, and I'll admit, I'm not the best at going on and opting in, and I have, I have messed up as a parent, and I would think that I'm a good parent. But my kid, we, the health form you had to opt in last year, I didn't get the form. She had to go sit and watch a movie, and then she was like, Mom, I don't know what they talked about. I was like, well, now it's my responsibility to teach you that. Which it should be, but I'm just saying, people mess up, even with the best intentions. And then there's a huge population of parents who just don't have the time to read everything. And so I just, I just don't want to miss some kids that we need to help. So again, thank you for your time.
Sure. And what we will say is part of that, if you look at the next pages of that, it says, at least 10 days prior to the survey being given, there's a big campaign. Okay, this is coming up, we're looking for participation. Moms, dads, we need you, we need this data. Because it's anonymous, but we also need that data so we know what to do next in the form of PD. Like, what do our kids need to do? How do we help our counselors and SIS team to help students? So for that, I'm glad that we at least do that. So yeah, we talk about it at the very beginning, because we have to notify, but then later on, we have to get that consent, and we try to garner that support from parents. So it's a hard, it's a hard one. It's hard. And it does probably drastically decrease participation. However, we're going to make sure we follow that law. All right.
Mr. Treadaway has one question.
I was just going to say that at the committee level, there was a lot of conversation about the difference between opt-out and opt-in. Even at the school level, just the logistics, if 30%, 40%, 70% don't opt in, what do you do with those kids, you know, during that time, you know, when you're doing the survey or whatever? And so I just, I just wanted to raise up, there was a lot of conversation about that whole topic.
It's a tough, it definitely is an issue, and it, you know, could be considered a barrier, but we're going to work to try to, you know, mitigate.
Ms. Sandich has one, a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm sure we have, but have we evaluated the impact at the school level as it relates to us being able to get information that we need for X? So if we aren't, if our percentages go from 60% of people completing the survey, and we're using that information for something that we need, have we evaluated the impact on not getting that information?
Well, I'm going to say, if we don't have it, there's information that we really can't act on. We can't make systemic changes if we don't have a big sample size. However, I will say, the panorama, which is three through 12, does ask, encompass, four through 12, does ask some, you know, questions about well-being, do you feel like you belong, those types of things. So we are getting some really good information. What we're not, what we may not be getting is this, the protected topic type of information, but we are getting some information.
Yeah, my question is, you answered it, but I'm trying to specifically identify if there are things that are, that is information we have to provide somewhere, for some reason that's mandated somewhere that we are not going to essentially get at this point, and is there a consequence to us as a district for that, is what I'm trying to figure out? That's the impact I'm talking about.
No.
Okay.
I think too, again, if I'm following the conversation here, which I believe I am, we're talking about opt-in, opt-out, and protected surveys versus non-protected surveys. So there is a, there is a difference, and I think there are a lot of protocols in place to identify some of those possible situations where kids need help, the at-risk situations. I think we have other, outside of surveys, other protocols within our systems that will catch kids that are falling, or catch kids that are at risk, or catch kids that have needs that we can address. That would be through our guidance counselors, through our social workers, through our principals, our teachers, et cetera.
And how many surveys are we talking about, I'm sorry, that we currently do that we will have?
Protected. Protected-wise. I know we have the EOC survey.
We, I can get that information for you. Yeah, we can get that information.
Okay. That's a good question.
Ms. Fugel?
My initial question was answered by the panorama comment, because I was curious, because that's a lot of data that we did use when we created our school improvement plans and to create that measurable part of it. So I was just, I'm glad that we clarified that. And then I guess the, I think you clarified as well when you said the protected surveys. So, for example, when I do a check-ins with my students or mid or end of semester check-ins, and I'm asking about how things went through the semester, those types of things for the teachers, like.
They're fine.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I understood the difference between.
Because we do a lot of conferencing, you know? We do it either after major tests, we do it at the end of semester, in a quarter for elementary kids. And we try to help the students review and reflect on what, you know, how they're feeling. Do you feel like you've learned everything? Do you need any more support? Those types of things. So I think those things are things that natural teachers do, and they do it well, right? We want to make sure that we're not scaring teachers away from asking, hey, how's it going?
Right.
But we also know that if something is then shared that needs to go somewhere else, we know the protocol for that, right? So we want to be able to handle those things.
Good.
But this specifically talks about protected topics, so actually acts in a survey, so not just asking like, hi, hey, how you doing?
Perfect. Thank you.
But that's great, and I'm glad you do that. But that's what we do. All right, any other questions for 4720? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to 6120, and if you see here, five words may have changed. Minor editorial changes here. We're talking about the student health services, how we serve our students who either come to us with different needs. There was some legal references, I believe, that may have needed to be done. But pretty much this policy, I think this was probably the only one that had very few changes. Any questions here?
Any questions? Hope.
All right. The next one would be staff responsibilities, which is 7300. And this one adds an employee responsibility to support parental involvement and never encourage a student to withhold information from their parents, which was strongly recommended. So that is coming on number six, if you see it there in red, as I said. Our committee decided that we would add this in, although it was strongly recommended, because it does show up in the other policy. It does show up in the Parents' Bill of Rights. So we might as well just put it there. And the language does say, do not coerce kids to keep things from their parents, so.
Any questions?
Our committee elected to keep it there.
No question.
All right. So those were the seven policies mostly impacted by the Parents' Bill of Rights. We have two additional policies that were left open from spring PLS. Oops. Hold on one second. All right, we're going to look at Policy 6430. We recommended, PLS recommended to change paragraph three. Initially, this paragraph was all struck through, and it talks about, except if otherwise required by law. But our committee decided that we would re-enter that paragraph in there with the amount of $250,000 as the amount for any contract that the board would have to accept a contract of that amount. Is that correct, Mr. Penn?
$250,000.
$250,000, yep. Any questions there? So originally, it was struck out, we decided we wanted it back in.
Any questions? No questions?
Right. And we did change the language to say chief, we're going to be changing the language to say chief financial officer instead of the perching officer. And last but not least, we have Policy 5008, which is another policy that was substantially revised here. Everything in red there. Most of this was recommended, but we had our, what do we call it? We had our communications, our technology, and our information system people to kind of look over this one, to kind of rewrite it based on what was applicable at this time. And so it is now in a form where this is the way we want to present it to you all. Any questions on that one?
Any questions? No questions.
Okay, so that is all I have for this evening.
Okay, Board members, there's been a request by Mr. Walter that the, is it all of these or just the ones that were updated from the Parents' Bill of Rights be put on action for next meeting?
All of them, except, I think all of them. Because I think just this afternoon, we got the actually red line version, which I had not seen earlier. And all we had seen is the versions that were presented to us just here. Doesn't show you where all the deletions were. And then the other concern I had was the, it appears, and I didn't realize that, that we did have a lot of conversations about the red lettering and the changes, and I'm, you know, I'm supportive of most of those. But what I'm not supportive of is using the state of the School Board Association's PLS draft policy and just using that as our policy. I think we have had a history of many years of tailoring those things to our, to really our procedures here at Cabarrus County Schools. And if we're going to adopt these policies as they are, we pull any of those past changes back. So I think we need to be able to look at those changes before we vote on them. So anyway, that's why I'd like to see it on action.
Okay, Board members, is everyone in agreement to put these policies on the action agenda for the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Ward. Okay, Board members, we'll move to 7.05. We'll have Mr. Brian Cohn and Mr. Tim Lauter with Arbrown McAllister.
This is going to be the Tim and Brian Show for the next one.
Oh, the Tim and Brian Show, okay.
I'll start. Good evening again. The Department of Construction received bids for the roadway improvements that are part of the Arbrown McAllister STEM School Project on Wednesday, November the 15th of this year. Brooks, Barry, Haney, and Associates out of Charlotte, North Carolina were the apparent low bidders for the project. The Cabarrus County Board of Education standard contract presented has been reviewed and completed by our attorneys and signed by the contractor. We are asking for approval of the contract in the amount of $488,265.60 with Brooks, Barry, Haney, and Associates for the roadway improvements that are required by NCDOT and the City of Concord for this project. This bid does fall well below the amount allocated for the roadway improvements. All costs associated with this project are 100% reimbursable by the, by the North Carolina Department of Transportation and the City of Concord once completed.
Any discussion, Board members? Mr. Walter?
So I remember a conversation about a year or two ago that they were going to require us to put a roundabout there.
They were not requiring a roundabout?
They were going to require us to put a roundabout there at one time?
They were not.
They were not, even though we had these.
They just asked us to look at the opportunity to put it up.
At the last two schools, we've had to put the roundabout?
So we did that.
We did what?
They asked us to look at the opportunity if we could put a roundabout there, but we were unable to do that.
Because of the space, is that what it is?
That is correct.
So it wasn't a requirement to do that? But it was at the other two schools?
That's correct, yes, sir. DOT has that right to tell us what they want us to do, so.
Well, I guess it saves us money, so that's, that's a good thing.
It's irrelevant because they reimburse us 100% for it, so.
Depends on how long it takes to get that reimbursement.
Any other questions? Okay. Board members, are you in agreement to put this on the consent agenda for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move to 7.07 with the furniture selection.
Am I next? Is furniture next?
Oh, did I miss one?
I don't care, I can go.
Oh, let's just, let's do it in order. You want to do them together?
No, no, that's fine. Tim can go.
Okay. So we'll go with.
I thought you just let me out there for you.
7.06, recommendation and approval of the opportunity school architectural design team.
Yes, you have, should have in your package, the selection, architectural selection review process. The Department of Construction received statements and qualifications from six different architectural firms, at which time we narrowed that to three. We did help hold interviews for those three. Once upon, once we finished those interviews, the selection committee was able to narrow it down to one firm, and we recommend that we hire Yates-Crexburg Architecture for the design services for the Mary Frances Wall rehabilitation, if you want to call it that, or rebuild.
Any questions or any, I know we had two board members that were in the interview process as well, Brian Floyd and Sam Treadaway.
I was there, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the opportunity to be there and see the process and see the bids, and I think it was very clear who the selection would be from what we saw, and I just thought it was a very good process and appreciate you guys inviting us to be part of it.
Thank you.
Board members, we will consent, okay? Consent to put that on the agenda. So we'll go to 7.07 in the furniture selection.
And so the department, district leadership, and the school staff, we've been working for the past six months on the furniture layout and design for the new Arbrown McAllister STEM School Project. We are presenting tonight for approval the agreement with New Idea for the Furniture, Fixer, and Equipment Package in the amount of $928,372.61. This figure, again, is well within the budget established with Cabarrus County for this package. New Idea will be utilizing North Carolina State Contract 420A, as well as Omni and TIPS as purchasing agreements with the various vendors. Once approved, they will proceed with placing the order to meet the overall project schedule, installation dates established by the school system and the contractor.
Any questions?
Have we worked with the company before? They're reliable?
Yes, sir, we have. They did Roberta Road Middle School for us.
Any other questions? Okay, we're in agreement to put this on the consent agenda. Okay?
Thank you.
We're all done. Thank you. Okay, Board members, we'll move to 8.01, to convening closed session. I need a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, including the cases involving the following parties, KMK and Quinones, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6.
Second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Treadaway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. Thank you. Thank you.